So I will need just a second, but you can certainly keep moving forward if there's enough to go with minutes.
Yeah, let's. So what the key is that we are switching the budget with Rocky Ledge and that's the only change to the agenda. Okay, so. Now I have lost my Zoom window. Pardon me, folks. Where will I find you again? There you all are. Okay, um, and now I can't tell who's here. Eching Kurt Sally, myself, we're just waiting on Cheryl. We do have a quorum, but why not? Let's see, it's nine, seven thirty one. Why don't we begin? Good evening Winchester, welcome to the the sorry, November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Planning Board meeting of the town of Winchester. We have a quorum with us this evening. And I will call people's names, though they could just reply present, that would be great. Eching Scott.
Present.
Sally Dale. Sally, can you, can you hear me Sally? I don't think Sally can hear us.
Oh, good. I thought I was not able to get him.
Can you hear me Sally? Okay.
I think her volume just Sally, turn your volume up. If she should, I think that's what he's, I think Sally, can you hear us?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, can you please call present?
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Kurt Spring.
Present.
And the jury is present, so we have four and still waiting our fifth member Cheryl Wolf. With us this evening, we have Nancy Polkari, our recording secretary. And we are being recorded both via Zoom, I believe. And also by Windcan, so hello out to all of our viewers out in TV land. So this evening, we have our usual updates and minute approvals. Then we have a slight change in our schedule. And that we will be reviewing the planning board budget first. Rather than the Rocky Ledge terrorist subdivision pre-application meeting. We will have our continued public hearing on ten Congress place as scheduled at eight thirty and then we will talk about Rocky ledges at nine fifteen. And we will discuss the Mass Point Implementation Committee and then we will hopefully adjourn on time. So why don't we open the meeting up by? Why don't we take a look at some of the meeting minutes unless there, yeah, why don't we do that first? So we have four minutes, three minutes rather. Three minutes to review. Brian, do you think you can pop up one of those, the first one? Okay. Any changes to these minutes by someone on the board?
I did have one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I said one quick change on on page three when it came to my comments. The second line says thought setting back the lower levels would help make it feel lower. And I think it it should have said thought setting back the upper levels would make it feel lower in regards to ten Congress plates.
Yep, that makes sense.
But that's it. That was my only comment.
Okay, uh, who else? Is there on my each thing?
Yeah, similarly in the same spot from my comments. I, it says that I would like to add more commercial space and affordable housing, less condos. I think that's not what I meant. I understand there will be condos. I just meant that there might be some creative ways to bring down prices with deed restrictions for resident only occupation. And to try to discourage investment property. So I'm not asking for more affordable housing. I'm just saying there could be creative ways to bring down prices here, but.
Okay.
I could simplify that, but.
Yeah, I I'm okay. It's is okay. The rest of the board okay with the clarifying that statement?
Yes.
Yes.
Then then Eching, if you could just send that off to Nancy, that would be great. And Kurt, if you could just send your change off to Nancy as well.
Sure.
Sally.
Um, the one I had is on the second page. And it's under Diom O'Connell and it's the very right hand end of the second line where it says also show on on the site where the corners of the building occur. I think what he was trying to say was to stake out in real life. Where so also stake out on the site. Is what I think he meant. And then I have no other edits.
Okay. Any, I mean, changing it from show on the site to stake out, I think is means it's 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 a clarification, I guess. Anyone have any problems with that change? And nobody seems to be objecting, so if you would send that change to Nancy, please Sally. And if there could be a Brian, could you scroll to the top so I get the date on this correct, please? Thank you. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October twenty six, twenty twenty one?
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but this is, um, this is actually, I think this is attached to the minutes, but it's somebody at different commissions minutes. So it's the Historical Commission on page six. In the in the later paragraph, I just want to clarify because it says that Mr. Gillespie explained that ten commerce place would have fifteen percent affordable housing and I I understood it to be ten percent. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, this has actually come up. I'm sorry, I'll just butt in here several times throughout the process is that fifteen percent of the units are deed restricted. Ten percent of them are at eighty percent and below. And five percent are deed restricted at eighty to one twenty, so for moderate income housing. So technically it's eighty percent affordable with the capital A, but fifteen percent deed restricted. That is, that that is the, but it's a good question because it actually has come up several times for with other projects in the CBD as well.
Okay, thank you.
So each thing was that you wanted to clarify.
No, I didn't want to change it. I just wanted to understand it.
Okay, okay. So why don't we, why don't we? Let's get the the motion. Let's get the motion voted on before I lose my chain of thought here. So I believe I could, Brian, let me make the motion again.
As as I meant, you were about, like, you 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 said the entire motion except for as amended, which was to approve the October.
Okay, so so let me just scroll back to the top, please.
It was the October twenty sixth.
Yeah, October twenty sixth. So the motion will be just for clarity to approve the the minutes for October twenty sixth as amended. Would someone make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
I.
Eching Scott.
Hi.
Kurt Spring.
I.
And I guess we don't have Cheryl yet. The jury says aye, that's for zero one absent. So if we could go to the next meeting minute, oh, you're already there. So the next one is on the first November twenty twenty one. This was right before town meeting. Any amendments to this one? And.
I have one.
Sally.
On the second page, Brian, perhaps you can help me with this. The first bullet under your remarks ends with forty to fifty units on the housing index. And I believe that what you mean, and this is up to you to confirm, is could be added to the subsidized housing inventory. And this is.
What what you said is definitely more accurate than what is on there, although, yes, you could say forty to fifty units on, you could either say on the S H I, which stands for subsidized housing inventory.
Right. So could expect forty to fifty units being added to the S H I?
That would be, that would be more accurate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. And if you could send that to Nancy, please.
Yes, I can do that.
Any other amendments?
October twenty sixth.
Wait, wait, we're just gonna stick on this one until we.
Oh, you're right, of course.
Yeah, Brian, if you could scroll back to the top so I can get that date correct. I think it's the first of November. Yes, so. Will someone please make a motion to approve the minutes of November first, twenty twenty one as amended?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Sally seconds. Okay, roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
I.
Kurt Spring.
I.
Eching Scott.
I.
And the jury says aye as well. So we're four zero with one absence. And then one more, I believe we have one more to go through, Brian. And that is November fourth. Are there any amendments for the November fourth minutes? Was that a ham Sally? Go ahead, please.
Um, it's it's a it's a similar clarifying statement about S H I on page one, under number three, Washington Swanton. And on the third bullet, the motion includes all units as supporting housing. And I think what it means to say is supporting the town's subsidized housing inventory.
Yeah, it would say all units on the subsidized housing inventory, yeah.
Motion includes all units as as being on.
Yeah.
These. Inventory. And so which means rental units, is that clear? It's sort of shorthand, but that's clear, right?
If you were just to put in at all units on the S H I, then I think that would be clear.
As all units. Okay. And then at the top of the next page, dear. And then you can help me with this, where it says affordable. So we'll state that the planning board supports the idea that all units be affordable. But what you mean is rental and count towards subsid S H I.
I think if you just say all units be on the S H I, then that would be sufficient, yeah.
Okay, good. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you for catching those. If there are no other amendments, then I would ask for someone to make a motion to approve the minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty one as amended.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Again.
Thank you. And roll call vote, please. Kurt Spring.
I.
Sally Dale.
I.
Eching Scott.
I.
And the jury says aye. And again, I don't, I don't see Cheryl. Okay, so we have a four zero one absent. And I think that's it for all of our minutes. Do we have any updates this week? Are there any updates from? There was a, we had a website working group. I don't know if that's actually managed to get any, get going yet.
We haven't met.
Okay.
I think that was me and Cheryl.
Yeah, yeah. So we can circle back on that later. Brian, did you have any quick updates that you wanted to? Make to our attention?
Um, yeah, I'll quickly talk about the local historic district study committee, which is looking at the Sims Corner area. So we are gonna be working with Claire Dempsey to start off the Massachusetts Historical Commission grant project in the Sims Corner. And once we get kind of an initial report from from her, we will be able to, what we want to do is use that information to have some type of some type of a both an outdoor and a potentially indoor event. But the outdoor would probably not be so much of an event. It's gonna be more kind of more of grassroots kind of things that you're already doing, like, I think I talked about this previously. Kind of like having coffee, coffee walks or, you know, walking your dog out out and about, just things that people are normally doing, even in winter time, people do that. And the idea is to kind of use that as much as possible because there's really a lot of people in the Sims Corner area that really understand the the historic value of the neighborhood. And there are plenty that it's just not, it's not top of mind, nor and and they also don't necessarily think. And this is not a large majority, but so some of them, they just don't necessarily see the historic value or character. So this, this is like a really good education point to kind of let not just the people in the neighborhood, but others know. You know how important some of these, this is, you know, one of the first areas of town. This is a big Sims was was, this was a big deal in terms of how this was developed. So but there's not much of an update there other than it's a little bit of a holding pattern on on our end, not the, not the consultant, not Claire Dempsey's, it's on the town's end. So once we get that information, we'll be able to use that, I think, to help kind of garner more support and kind of organize some of these informal. I don't want to call them events. It's more of an informal meetings, but that are organized to help people learn about where they live. And that's it for for that for that update.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We need to have a a new name for something that doesn't involve Zoom. I hope these don't involve Zoom. I guess if you're walking.
No, zero, zero, zero zoom. That's that. That's kind of the whole point is that, you know, we did what we can during during COVID was it was hard to start and that's the problem. If you had something started, you could probably, it easily could have brought it, Zoom could have brought it through. But the idea is that like, no, you need to be out in the neighborhood being like, oh, no. You know, this is why, this is why this house is important or this area is important or this corner is important. Or, you know, I mean, there's a, there's a, you know, there's a whole bunch of conversations there that need to happen naturally so that people care more. That's all. And that doesn't, it's not happening through Zoom and it's not happening through the mail surveys or or talking to, you know, cold calling people or anything like, but like, that's, that's not how it happens. So it's taking much longer than we anticipated for a number of reasons. But, um, the everyone, you know, the, everyone's committed to to moving it. So at least it's a good attitude.
Excellent. In that case, if there are no further updates, then why don't we move into our agenda? And just as a room, sorry, I have to move this window away from your face. Hi Sally, yes, go ahead.
So I don't know if you or Brian can give like a ten second update on either Waterfield or North Main Street.
I can plainly say I cannot.
Okay.
North Main Street is, I emailed Josh today, asking, kind of asking for, because I was under the impression we were going to get something within the next, I think a week ago, I said about ten, ten to fourteen days is what I'd said. And I just wanted to make sure that we were on that schedule, which would be about a week from now. And I just wanted to, I was just to check in. So I got a check and email to Joshua by North Main Street, so no, no update yet. I didn't expect it yet. We didn't expect it at this point. So it's not like, you know, that's the, that's, I guess that's that's the important part. And as of Waterfield, the only updates I know that are that the manager, the the manager and the assistant town manager are meeting with Civico on behalf of the select board often. I don't know if it's every week, but maybe near, maybe nearly that to try to move forward with the objectives set forward by the select board. The other potential. Well, the only, the other, the other item that's related to Waterfield would be that there's talk of a potential special town meeting. It's I don't, I I don't know exactly and I wouldn't, you know, you're, no one's gonna hold me to it because no one really knows, but I think that there's a possibility of end of January or February or some something, or maybe later, I don't, I I it it might end up getting pushed to spring, but I don't think that's really a possibility. The point is, I really don't know. So I'm not really helping with that, but I have heard of a potential special before, you know, before spring.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have until eight thirty to discuss the town, to discuss the planning board's budget. It's usually a fairly simple process, but we need to get through it. Brian, if you want to pop up the overview of the last several years budgets, we can take a look at. So typically there is a discussion of goals completed and goals in the future that accompany the budget. And I think that we can, most importantly, is is what we're going to be doing. So if the Waterfield parcel does get negotiated, then if things go without, then it would be coming before this board for permitting, so we would be supporting them in that. We have the Holton Street project coming up, the study. As you can see here, taking the results of the North Main Street study and actually bringing them to the neighborhoods and working out what we're going to be doing for zoning. We have a lot of things in the Housing Production Plan that are laid at town planner and the planning board's feet. For those of you who haven't been on the planning board forever, we have a sorry history of having subdivisions not being officially closed out. And some of them have stretched out for decades. Some of them are in legal limbo. They're just, it's just kind of a mess. And Brian had been working through them, trying to make, get them in a state where legal could take over and make a decision as to what we would do with them. And we're just gonna keep hammering away at those. And then there's that big one at the bottom, Brian, you sprung on me. Full review of the zoning bylaw.
So the, so the, first of all, this should have been changed from twenty two to twenty three. This was a, this was a previous goal and objective that we, that was, this was not a new one that I had put in. This is leftover that we never addressed. But this, this, this really is actually tied into more of also some type of more administration for the zoning board as well. So like in relation to not just the building, but also the building department, but also administrative support. It's just, it, you know, it's related to that, so.
Yeah, we've had, we have had the board, prior boards has had a discussion about trying, getting a significant chunk of legal of town councils time to go over the the bylaw and try to understand where it can be clarified without changing its meaning. That's an important thing. Any sort of revision of the bylaws has to ensure that it doesn't actually change. So that is always a difficult thing. So the the big thing that I think we, I I believe has been mentioned by someone else on this board, and so I won't take credit for it, is to pursue getting an assistant town planner, which has, which has a position which has been created. We did fund it for, I believe it was a part time position out of our contract or consultant fees for one year. And that was Savannah Nicole. I've forgotten Savannah Nicole's last.
The album.
The album. She assisted, she was working a lot with what she was doing. So go ahead, please.
Sorry, so I mean, she was kind of hired as the as the, as an assistant planner, but kind of focusing on economic, economic development and housing. So she, she started going to the Historical Commission meetings and the Design Review Committee meetings, kind of at the beginning to to kind of understand the ins and outs. But then she ended up doing a lot of work in the Center Business District, looking at different ways to kind of start a a Main Streets organization without starting a Main Streets organization. Kind of doing it through through the town. So it was but one thing that she that she did not do was was do any type of administrating for the zoning zoning Board of Appeals, which is something that we actually did have in the job description, but we ended up, it ended up not being a real part of of her work. Mostly because it was, and it ended up being a contract position. It was not a full, she was not a full time employee. And it was, you know, part time or full time, sorry, it was, you know, every day, but not for, we did, the funding was not there for that. So it would certainly be a different position. It's not like we really had an assistant planner. Although, meaning in the sense that it was not a full time employee where they felt that they were comfortable enough to stay. It was a wheel. There was only enough money for one year. So it was kind of a different mindset.
But it gave us, it gave us significant help and it gave us a flavor for what the board could do if they had an appropriately staff planning department, so. Brian, do you want to, do you want to give us? Why don't we take a look at the the next page? Is this the one where you have all of the? Okay, so this is, yeah, so this is the layout of our previous budgets and requested budget for next year.
Right, so the the only, the only real difference, there's two, there's two differences from the the last year is, one is, there's yeah, I know this is really small. Let me get, let me get this. So it's going up another, you know, seventy five thousand dollars for an assistant town planner. And then the only other difference is the professional services is going down. Mainly due to the fact that we could potentially get some of those standard, we used to ask for thirty thousand dollars previously. This forty five thousand dollars is what we asked for. We didn't get the fifteen for North Main Street, but ended up getting the fifteen from for North Main Street through town meeting. So even though we requested forty five, we only got thirty. Just as a point of clarification there. So we're our budget from thirty for asking for thirty here is actually what we, the same as we got last year. So the only difference that we're asking for, it's a big one, is a new full time employee. This is a big ask at the, at the moment in general, because the town, you know, select board town man or the, you know, select board and town manager have requested departments to to give a level service budget. Meaning they're not going to be probably approving a lot of full time employees. However, there is no doubt that due to some of the There is no doubt um, that due to some of the zoning changes that were proposed by the planning board. And eventually voted on by town meeting over the past eight years. Um, there have been an increase, certainly, so before that, the number of site plan reviews that were carried out were very low. Um, and then we um, we passed triggers for a new site plan review, site panel view for, for new large houses. Or um, additions over certain square footage, so that happened about five years ago, four or five years ago. That, that would, that definitely made a lot, a much larger caseload uh, for the zoning board of appeals, and also for the, for the building clerk. Um, that has kind of snowballed over the years due to pressures of development and other just administrative. Um, there, there's just, there's just more of everything um, in, in general, and uh. And the idea is that a, an assistant planner, that clearly has roles in assisting the zoning board in terms of. Decisions, going to their meetings, certainly not being a lawyer, but being, being present as a, as a, as a staff to have the zoning board staff not. Um, because it's um, yeah, and not as a, as a, um, yeah, I mean, I just think that uh, there needs to be. Um, you know, that, that presence from uh, that presence there, and I think that they would appreciate it. Um, we have not talked to the zoning board about that, but this is something that has been in the works for five years that we, we, you know, since we've been putting in. And the zoning board has had several turnover in the past two years. Um, but as we lead up towards uh, budget uh, conversations, which are over the next month. Um, that is something um, that we would probably want to do to see how much of there is an overlap between all the things that we want to do. And all the things that are likely to um, move forward um, as being a concrete part of a, of a department. Meaning that that person would be supporting the ZBA, again, it was always in our job description for the assistant planner. But that was based upon a full-time employee. So that was a really long-winded thing, but that's the only thing we're really talking about related to this budget, there's no other changes to the budgets, it's essentially a level service budget. Period, otherwise, so the really only conversation. Uh, to have, and I don't know how much, it looks like we have.
About half an hour.
About, okay, so that's way more than enough time than we need.
I, I do have something I wish to amend.
Please.
And that is, if you could pop that back up once more, Brian, sorry.
Yes, no, uh, go right ahead.
So at the top, you have um, this listing called temporary, and is that um.
That is how we pay our recording secretary.
That's how we pay our recording secretary, so if the board, I, I, I hope. That we get a master plan implementation committee going.
Yeah.
And we have stated that we would like to support that committee with its um, recording requirements. So should we bump up the, that part of the budget to take that into account?
Yes, I think that's a, that's a good idea, and I um, totally overlooked that, so thank you.
So I have no idea how much that would be, um, I'm thinking we're talking maybe one meeting a month, maybe one and a half, if we average it over a year.
Yeah, I think we, I think um, when we finalize, uh, so be, um, DM and I are going to finalize this budget tomorrow. Um, and just how it felt, how it fell out, this is actually due to the manager tomorrow at noon. Um, so we can figure out, um, well, we have a quick meeting tomorrow, and we'll just do, um, you know, the idea, uh, we'll do thirteen, you know, fourteen meetings. At the, at the current rate that we bear a recording secretary and just add that, uh, do a rough estimate to the, to the temporary, so um, I'm good, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, um, I, I, the only other thing I had to say is that, uh, other reasons for having a uh, for our, an FTE assistant town manager, or town manager. Of town planner is of course the increased uh, burden, or I should say workload. Um, with the projects coming into CBD, as well as things like, uh, Brian spent an inordinate amount of time working on the waterfield lot. Which was not um, part of our plans, but certainly having uh, another person in the planning department to help with that. Um, would have been really, really useful, I think, so, anyway, I'll open the floor to the discussion. Jump in.
Yeah, I was wondering about these surpluses from the professional services, don't we have some unused funds, and is that counted for, and what, what else can that be used?
Sure, so um, this is our operating budget. Um, so this is, this is, um, what, um, and what you're talking, so there are other, there is, um, I believe. I wanna say fourteen thousand dollars left in a, in a, in the master plan fund. But that, that's a, that, that is a, that is outside of our operating budget, so this is the budget that, yeah, this is just the, our operating budget that we're requesting for the manager. And then the manager goes over everybody's budget. Um, and then they come up with their own budget that sometimes aligns, sometimes it's, works out better for us, sometimes it works out worse for us. It's just, there's a lot of, it's very difficult, and you know, there's a lot of time that goes into it, and, and then it gets put to town meeting. And um, where a, um, it can get to the, down to the level of a line item uh, at town meeting, but that's, that, just so you know the whole process.
Okay, so the goal is to sort of just ask now, and then.
Request, this is, this is, yeah, this is the request.
Right, if there's funding from like the, the uh, COVID stuff and, and leftover from other things, we just sort of.
ARPA, yeah, ARPA is a totally other thing that I wish there was an update for me to tell you about that, but um, it's, it's ongoing. There will, there will, there will be some type of public process at some point, but I don't, I don't know what that is, um, but no, we are not talking about grant funding or um. Federal, stim, uh, federal money, I mean, and, anything, it's, it, this is, you know, town money, um, you know.
And, and, and surpluses don't roll over, if we don't spend what we have this year, we don't get to keep it. So.
And if anything, they might say, well, you didn't use it, so maybe you don't need it.
So in professional services, what are we uh, including in that, is that like lawyer fees and?
So typically, so typically, we ask for thirty thousand dollars, um, where um, mo- um. In, in previous years, about ten to twenty of that goes to some type of design consultant to get ahead of a, um. A project for a specific reason, or, you know, there's some type of town project where the planning board or the, you know, land use is involved, or maybe not the planning board's. Involved, but they're willing to contribute some of their, some of their money, which that literally happens every year, there's some, there's at some point during the year where. There's some type of land use. Um, uh, whether it's legal or not, where the planning board um, votes to, you know, put in five or six or seven thousand dollars or something like that, out of that thirty. Um, but typically, we hire someone for about fifteen thousand to do some type of um, essentially on-call design work.
So historically, that has been with um, Mr. Uh.
Carlon.
Carlon with like the uh, Swanton, Washington.
So yeah, so he, yeah, so he had done uh, Washington and Swanton, there was also portions of before Abbey Road was, was a five-unit. Um, or it's a potential six-unit um, subdivision, um, Abbey Road was going to be a, a forty B. And we were looking at alternatives to that, we hired Dennis Carlon to look at alternative, um, you know, designs for, for, or really like layouts for that. Um, so these types of projects that are like, you know, kind of town-involved or town-run, um, you know, where we have a hand in it.
So if that's fifteen, what's the other fifteen?
Um, so the other fifteens are specifically either a specific project, like North Main Street or Holton Street. So we always kind of do one other project, so um, it's typically, those are, uh, the three buckets of things are some type of on-call person. Whatever that might be, if it's designed this year, or someone else this year, it's some type of on-call professional. Then you have some type of a project to further, whether it's a visioning, is something, you know, we don't get a lot of money, you know, we're getting thirty thousand dollars for, for, you know, trying to hire three consultants, like. That's, you know, there's not a lot there. Um, and then this third is what I talked about at the beginning, it's kind of this mishmash, well, we're not really involved a hundred percent of it, but we're, you know, meaning we're not the permit granting authority, we're not driving a project. But we are, you know, we have a say, and, you know, there's no real specific place for this money to come from, and we, we give, we give. Parts of our budget, like I said, five, six, seven, not ten, but typically, it's happened, you know, I don't know, let's say six out of eight years. Where we're giving, you know, maybe three or even two thousand to six thousand dollars to some project that's like that.
Well, I, I think under that um, sort of thing, when the uh, RFP for. The Washington Swanton property was underway, we contributed money for a design consultant to help with that project. Which was sort of an emergency, last minute, we should really provide some expertise in that area, so that, that popped up pretty quickly. I think, well, I think we had like two weeks to, to make, to get it going or something like that, it was pretty fast, so.
So is there a reason why you're asking for fifteen thousand less than last year?
So, um, well, the idea was that, just so you know, the, the window of, into last year was thirty thousand was going to be professional services for. Um, like two consultants, that was the, the plan, the plan was to get two different types of consultants. Someone like a Dennis Carlon doing architectural and urban design, and then um, maybe someone who um, could help out more with the difficult. Projects that are not in an urban setting, that are more his, uh, you know, historic neighborhoods, or, you know, some other type of professional. The idea was we would do fifteen and fifteen, and that extra fifteen was going to be North Main, and, and um.
Holden Street.
Sorry, sorry, who knew I'm saying last year?
I thought it was Holton Street, we went to a town meeting for an extra fifteen K for Holton Street.
Uh, uh, sorry, you are, no, no, that, sorry, you are correct, sir.
Don't call me sir.
No, I'm doing the year, yeah, I skipped, I did the old skip a year. Um, so, yeah, we were trying to get um, thirty thousand dollars to do, to, to do the same two consultants, so a design, an urban, more kind of like an urban design consultant. And then a more like historical neighborhood um, kind of consultant, and then the other fifteen was, was, was Holden, was Holton Street. Uh, the manager and town, I don't, I can't remember if it was the manager or if it went to town meeting, but um, it didn't get, oh, then it went to FinCom. Um, and it did not get done at FinCom, it got denied at FinCom, and then um. Denied a town meeting, I'm sorry, and then it went to town meeting, we had to actually do a separate uh, motion to do it.
So we got our forty-five K, but we had to do it in a different way, because our budget was, that extra fifteen K was denied by the town manager and FinCom. So they only gave us thirty K, so we went straight to town meeting, which didn't make us friends in some places. But we got our fifteen K for Holton Street that way, so we're traditionally around thirty to thirty-five K is what we do for design consultants. And I would say maybe upping up the fi- putting it up to thirty-five K would make me happier, because prices haven't gone any lower, so.
Ju- just to be clear, we have, we, we don't have anyone under contract right now, so we, we, um, there's, you know. Um, meaning, uh, meaning with the, with the town, uh, in terms of someone like a um. Um, yeah, so, someone that's like, in, essentially would be like in-house, in terms of what's happening right now at Ten Converse, uh, that is technically an outside consultant or fifty.
Yes, but.
We, we, we are not paying, we are not paying that bill, we, they're not, although they work for the town. Um, they, um, it's technically, well, again, it's an outside consultant, so it's not someone under contract that we, that, that's uh, paid by taxpayer, to pay the taxpayer money.
But I, you know, as we move forward with uh, North Main Street and then Holton Street, we will be needing consultants. And we will certainly, you know, we have fifteen K for Holton Street, we have the uh, master plan money that's left over. Um, we certainly may need to give more money for that, I think we will spend a chunk of our thirty K by the end of the fiscal year. And I think that we will need, if we're looking at what we're gonna be doing in the next fiscal year. Um, you know, that starts, uh, when is that, next June?
July first.
July first, I mean, I would just think that if we just look at the, the. The costs for any project, they're going to be, you know, we've been stuck at thirty-five or thirty for several years now in terms of our budgets. And um, we can't really hire more than one or two consultants, so that really constrains what we can do. So I, I, I think it might be worthwhile bumping up our ask for consultants. Um, if they deny it, they deny it, but we won't get more if we don't ask. This is, this is sort of open season, so anyone, please jump in.
So one, one question I had, um, as you struggle with the idea of not having enough money for consultants. Is that, Brian, you talked that it, it's like six years out of eight, or whatever thing you said. That we often are able to put planning board money into non-planning board projects to help them move through town, or move them, move the work along, or.
Like to, for an RFP, for example, for an RFP uh, for Washington and Swan, or an RFP for Waterfield, there, we're not paying half of it. But we're contributing, we're, we're, we're contributing because the money has to be found somewhere, and, you know, that we're part of that, we're part of that puzzle, you know?
Right, so, so it's not that the, the, that the amount that we're um, budgeting for is necessarily nice even chunks of fifteen K each. It's understanding our share of lots of things that could be coming up, or what we think we could budget for, to be able to support, like for instance, um. Um, well, no, I don't even wanna speculate, cause I don't know, but um, just to make sure that we budget for that, as opposed to um, uh, not budgeting for it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that the idea is that. The, there, again, there are kind of three, you know, there are three budget items when it comes to these professional services, every, everything else is pretty standard, um. Other than the recording secretary that um, DM said, but the, the, the three things, like, you know, and I'm saying that one of those three things, it's about. Two to eight thousand dollars, so you know, maybe we budget, you know, five, five to six thousand or something like that, kinda always ends up getting spent because. For one reason or another, and it's hard, and FinCom and others don't like us budgeting like that, but that, 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 that's how a lot of. Departments in town have operated for many years.
They don't like, what kind of budgeting?
The idea that there's like a cushion of any kind, it doesn't matter that much, the, it's like, it's the idea is you, you budget for the things you need, and, you know, you plan for, and you use it, and then you move forward. Um, that, that, that's not the, the point is, is that we can still ask for, this is our ask to the manager, that, you know, wha- whatever. Uh, I, I mean, I think we should, we should have goals to see what we wanna do, how much money is associated with those, associated with those goals. And make a case for it to, to anyone, including the manager.
Right, so one, you, we have our goals document here, and do we know specific consultant um. Targets we might like to budget for to, on this line item, so that we are showing that we planned for this, and that this is necessary, and this is part of our work?
No, I mean, a, a, at the moment, you know, we have not had the, you know, this um, this longer conversation in, uh, at all. Um, about the direction and goals and objectives of the board, uh, we just haven't had the time for various reasons, and there's. No one to blame with that but time, I, I mean, just like, there's just not enough of it, so.
Can I ask as an example, um, like, so if I look at our goals document, one, two, three, four, five, there's six goals. Um, the Waterfield, Holton, North Main, um, housing production plan, uh, I'm not sure what.
There, there's no doubt they're gonna be, that, that Holden, so fifteen thousand dollars is not getting us a dent, there's no, in terms of. Um, this, the fifteen thousand that we have this year, so there's no doubt that all of the funding uh, that we would be using for professional services. We could split between things between Holton and North Main, that, that, those are the two, I mean, that's not much of a debate, I guess, at some level, if we're looking towards um. You know, zo- uh, zoning, zoning changes to, to uh, make uh, you know, lasting change to, to help the community.
Right, so the zoning bylaw needs a full review by the planning board, would that mean that? Would that mean that we need to budget also for legal or is that coming out of a different town budget account?
So, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question, that, that, that would probably um. I, I don't, I don't think that that's something that. We, we. We, we, we could budget for that, I, I, I don't, I don't know, actually, I'm gonna, I'll say that Sally, I'm not, I'm not sure.
We, we started to have conversations with Art about that in terms of what was covered by. The, the contract that Anderson Krieger had with the town and. We didn't get very far, I think, because we didn't bring the town manager into that discussion. But certainly there are some things which are covered and they're sort of like the ordinary things that you expect. This might fall under a above and beyond, you know, a, an actual line item rather than just.
Called a special project, but I, I, but in terms of how much money that would cost, I, I, I could, I couldn't tell you. And I think that's a deeper, longer conversation with. With, you know, um, the, 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 it's not just the zoning, it's not just the zoning bylaw, because like a lot of things having, is having to do with. Uh, how all of this is organized uh online.
How it's organized online, you said?
Yeah, in terms of how that, how it's related to um e, you know, e-permitting. Um, which is, which is something that the building department is trying to do right now.
Forms and the procedures.
All of, exactly, it's like, it's this kind of like this whole big monster that we're basically starting to take a little tiny bite at now. That's about to get very large, probably over the next two and a half years.
If I could just loop back to the discussion that we had just a few minutes ago about the zoning bylaw review. Um, as I've been familiarizing myself with the zoning bylaw, I have made many margin notes. And I've identified many things that are not um uh information changing or rules changing, they're just like. Corrections to what it says, you know, it cites the wrong section or, or whatever. And then I have another layer of margin notes that are things that I think. Um, we as a planning board and then as a town meeting could consider changing. So those would go in that other pile of things that we shouldn't forget about, might be a good idea, let's put it on the docket or whatever. Um, so I think it's really important that we keep the zoning bylaw a, a, a living document. Um, and so I would say that it would be good to have an answer from Art about. Um, if we can break it out into manageable chunks.
Well, yeah, I, 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 yeah, I see what, I, I, I think the idea is, is really then it's a decision, it, it's a decision if we. If the board wants to, to put specific money towards that, I, I think the idea of splitting. Thirty thousand dollars between North Main Street and Holton Street. Is, 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 you know, that's, if, if those are the two areas that. Um, you know, well, those are the two areas that have, we've, we've started to look at and um are, are key areas. Um, that we want to continue to explore. And I don't, I, I guess I'll just say bluntly, I don't, I don't think we should put money towards legal services. Related to that portion of the goal. Um, simply because there's not enough to even do North Main. And, you know, we're not a lot, we're not gonna make, we're not gonna be able to do large chunks in North Main and, a- a- and Holden at the same time.
Unless we ask for more money.
Right, and I don't think that, that we're gonna get more money.
Also on the assistant town.
Yeah, yeah, now, all I was gonna say is, if this is a special project and we've discovered that it's gonna take a sizable chunk of money. Then this is something that we might want to approach town meeting with and say, you know, we have, we have, you know, we figured out how much it's gonna cost to do this project. Um, this is a one-time thing, um, and we'll ask town meeting for a, a one-time um. Disbursement or whatever it's called.
That makes sense to me.
Anyway, we have six minutes, we have six minutes according to my clock.
About the assistant town planner con- just conversation, because we didn't have a chance to weigh in as a board.
Right, please do.
It's, it's really, um, uh, i- i- in the process, I would hope that there would be a point. Where some kind of a case statement, as I would call it in my old days. Would be PowerPoint or whatever it is to say, this is the reason that we need this person, make the case. State the specific fa- um foundations and you'd had a lot of that in your remarks that I was scribbling down. But isn't there a place in the budget process between December first and spring town meeting? Where each requesting body gets to make their case to the town manager and then to FinCom?
So that's exactly what's happening, so um, uh, Dia, Ben, the chair, the, the chair and I uh meet with the manager. And then, and then after that, uh, we, we do meet with FinCom and sometimes there's multiple meetings with FinCom as we lead up to spring town meeting.
So I would really love to see that we all together create a really um persuasive. Short PowerPoint that says, what would this person do for us, for the town? What, how, how this would truly benefit the town? Um, otherwise, it's just, you know, asking for money and not making your case. So, um, is that something that the planning board could take on?
Yeah, yeah, no, at, right now, at the point, right now, we're just trying to figure out what, is all the bore, is the planning board. I- i- you know.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, do you want, do you want uh to put it in the budget, make, do you want to make the request to the town manager? For an assistant town planner at, a, a certain pay, you know, at a certain pay grade. Like, I mean, that, that's what it is right now, the, the, the position has already been created by the, by the, the personnel. Board, uh, so that, that's a big hurdle that, that was already gone over. Um, so we're just, we would basically be require, you know, asking, we haven't, we haven't made the decision. It's, it's gonna be somewhere between sixty-five and seventy-five thousand dollars uh in terms of right around that pay grade for an assistant town planner. Um, so the question then is, how are we gonna sell it? It's a question, is, is everyone here on the planning board want to do, want to put that line item? In our request to the manager and it's, it's a vote.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I, I, I think you need, I mean.
I think we, yeah, that would be good, that may as well, doesn't hurt. So if someone wants to make a motion that we include an assistant town planner. As uh budgeted by Brian or outlined by Brian.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Cheryl Wolf is with us, hey Cheryl. Um, I believe you were here for this discussion, I can't, I, you're, there are too many people on my screen right now. Um, so, uh, I will do a roll call vote then, uh, Eching Scott.
Hi.
Uh, Kurt Spring.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
Hi.
Cheryl Wolf. Cheryl Wolf abstains, I believe, you're, you're, you're muted.
Yeah, I need to abstain, I wasn't here long enough to.
Excellent, uh, and Deirdre is, is I, so we have four, zero, one abstention. I think the only other, if, how, we can. So the only other two things that came up briefly, well, not briefly. One was the addition of money for recording secretary for the master plan implementation committee. Uh, and Brian laid out, you know, however many hours, if, if the board wants to go ahead with that, why don't we vote on that as well? Um, is there a motion for that? That's a pretty minor ask, I think.
Do, do you know what minor dollars it is?
It's gotta be a few, a couple thousand, maybe fifteen hundred, I don't know, it's, it's.
Sounds like i- i- it would be equal to what we budget now for planning board minutes, no?
Uh, I, it would, there would be many fewer meetings, I would presume.
Yeah.
Not clear on that.
Yeah.
So we budgeted six thousand and I think the idea would end up being, you know, maybe seventy-five hundred or eight, or eight thousand. At the, uh, you know, another fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars.
To include recording for the.
For master plan. You know, what, I think, what, what we had decided was, is gonna be whatever fourteen meetings would be. You know, to, um, you know, how much, how much, however much it would cost to do somewhere between twelve to fourteen meetings in a year.
So I think we should add that to our budget request to the town manager.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I move that we add to our fiscal twenty-three budget request. Um, funds to increase our temporary budget, which we use for recording secretary. To include funds for a recording secretary for fourteen meetings of the master plan implementation committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent, uh, roll call vote, uh, Eching Scott.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
Hi.
Kurt Spring.
Hi.
Cheryl Wolf.
Same.
Was, I'm sorry, was that a yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain?
Okay, I'm sorry, I. I have a bad internet connection, my apologies, uh. Darius says I, so uh, that is four, zero, with one abstention. The other question that I raised, which we can deal with very quickly is. Are we happy with thirty thousand dollars for the, our consultants fees? Are we happy to stick with thirty thousand? Or do we wanna tweak that?
So again, it was making the case, it was saying, we think we're gonna need two for this, maybe six for this. Maybe fifteen for this, maybe fifteen for this, and that equals thirty-eight, if, if that's what we come up with, but being. Tying it to specific project work.
Right, so, you know, the other, the option is that we leave it at thirty and then if we have a very, if we can come up with a very specific project. Then we go to town meeting and ask for something, maybe not this spring or, or maybe in the fall. I think we can always, if we have a very specific project, then I think that's always a possibility.
Yeah, that's right, you did say that earlier, so that would be an argument for leaving it at thirty?
I thought your argument, Dia, for uh increasing it for inflation um was, was a good one.
Okay, of, of course, I don't know what that increase should be, but um.
It should be five point six percent according to the Social Security Administration.
Okay.
And I think some, I think some of the thought was that we're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars to be, to be a, a new. To, to, just to be a new standing um cost. So the, um, the idea is that potentially we would need less consultant work because there'd be another person in-house. Already that we're asking for seventy-five more than um, you know, that, that's in. Uh, that's not in professional services, that's a, it's in personal services. So it's in the operating budget, which is a completely different thing, the oper- you know, so we're asking for an operating, but a new, a new spending. In the operating budget, it's a big deal. So I think the thought was like, well, maybe let's not increase the professional services just because we're asking for such a big thing.
I, I think that's a very valid point, Brian, I think realistically that we will not be given an FTE. Uh, I think this is just, you know, the point is that we had this put in many years ago because there was a need, we've seen the need. And maybe it's time to just simply re, you know, remind everyone that we did go. And get this position created because of the need. I'm swayed by your argument, Brian, I think we don't, we, we, we are not a greedy board. Um, but we said, I don't think we are, um, so, but it's up to the rest of the board, just. Remind everyone that according to my watches, we are now past the beginning of our hearing for ten Converse, so if we wanna.
So can I make a motion to, to leave it, leave the professional services at thirty?
Sorry, I, I, you, if, if you're keeping it at thirty, you don't need to make a motion, that's what, that's what was sent out, yeah, if, you know.
Good, thank you.
Just to be clear, yeah.
So if, if no one wants to move to increase it, then I think we're done.
Great, wonderful, that was one of the quickest budget meetings we've ever had, even though it, that was forty-five minutes, but usually this is over several times and.
Actually, it was less, it was less than forty-five because we started late.
Anyway, anyway, it's eight thirty, um, so I take it away, Dia.
Okay, so uh, we are now uh resuming our public hearing on the development at Ten Congress Place. We have forty-five minutes for this, this evening. What we will be focusing on this evening is. Um, at the request of the developer and also with the agreement of the planning board at last week's meeting, we were looking at. Um, commercial spaces in the development. As to where they should be located and how much commercial space there might be. Um, I don't, so the type of commercial space, I think, is, is kind of beyond um the scope of this. Because no one knows what will work, at least. So, um, Brian, if you would remind us what the zoning. Um, calls out for in terms of mixed-use developments in the PUD and perhaps. What the um suggestions are for how it should be approached.
Yeah, so there's a couple sections that call out, um. They call out commercials specifically, uh, there's not, there's not a ton. So. So one. Part, one of the goals of the, of the Center Business District is to enhance the commercial and residential tax base within the Center Business District. So a commercial component is, is important. Um, the idea of the town that's promoting an active setting along its main downtown streets, which would be Mount Vernon, one of the. Spider webs of the, of the, of the circle. So along its main downtown streets, both during and after customary business hours. Additionally, the town supports new residential development throughout the downtown that will maximize hours of activity and improve the public security. So this is in the design, uh, sorry, in the um seven point three point seventeen. So, um, this, this is, um, and there's really, um, there's not a ton more. Um, they're all in seven point three point seventeen, which is the mix of land uses. So, um, each development is encouraged to have a mix of uses, including retail and restaurant on the first floor with housing and or limited office above. Um, and then it goes into where retail and red, uh, retail and restaurants should focus on and aliving the existing streets in the CBD. Um, and that parking shall be screened from, um, and parking shall be screened. So in terms of how the retail, the housing, the office and the parking mix is how it, where it talks about. But in terms of where it specifically um should be located. Um, I wouldn't say it's, it's, it's completely prescriptive, but I think all, all signs do point. Towards having the retail component on the main street of Mount, of Mount Vernon. Um, um, based, ba- based upon the design guidelines and the zoning. Uh, so they're not screaming but out that it must be here, but it's certainly pointing in the, in the direction. That it should be faced on, on, on Mount Vernon Street. I, I don't know if, um, you know, it goes back to you, Dia, or if we wanted to in, invite the, um, the applicants to the table. Or what, what, um, where we go from here.
Well, I think it would be useful, what I'd like to do is get a sense of where the board feels. And so if we could just, if, if the board would, you know, do. One or two minutes per person, go around the board and get their perspectives, then invite the, the applicants to come in after they've kind of heard where the board is coming from. And then we could have that discussion so that, um, we start. So, um. Why don't we, um, why don't we start, uh, who on the board? I'll give you all, uh, why don't I give you all ninety seconds so that we can get some time for discourse in that later, so who would like to go first? Okay, that is unusual, um, Sally, go right ahead, please.
So I, um, totally support there being um retail and slash commercial. On both sides, and I think that of the building, and I think that was something, if I'm not mistaken, that came. Out of the, one of the suggestions from the historical commission, I'm not sure, but I have a question for Brian. Does it, does it say in the zoning bylaws, um, what amount of square feet of. Commercial slash restaurant slash retail is supposed to be on the first floor of the building? Because right now I think we're at twenty-three hundred square feet or something like that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, it, it does, it's not prescriptive like that, it's much more about making sure that the uses blend well together and the space works. You know, that, you know, that, that, that the uses work and that, most importantly, that it enlivens the street.
Right, so the argument um for having it on Mount Vernon Street is a very compelling one. Right, so the argument, um, for having it on Mount Vernon Street is a very compelling one, and the argument for having it on the pond is also very compelling. And so, um, I don't know how to work with that because I think they're both really good ideas.
Well, as you pointed out, maybe both. So our, is, is our, our, you still have fifteen seconds, Sally?
No, I'm good, Eching raised your hand.
Okay, go ahead, Eching, please.
I'll go. I can imagine that the retail space or getting an active ground floor is kind of in flux with COVID, with, with retailers and, and online stuff, so, but I, I would, um, think that this building, I mean, it's, it's bringing so much life into town that I would think that the first floor usage of, of some kind of active ground space would be the best use. Um, on all foursized, Mount Vernon, um, in the, in the, uh, Congress place, the, the fountain side as well as the, um, riverside. Cause I think the riverside specifically, as the, as your application has called out, you know, is, is with flats, and I understand you're, you're working from some of the comments from, um, some of the board members. But I feel like that riverside, because it's a new, um, new, uh, bike space, uh, bike, bike trail, and how it connects, you know, from Jank Center all the way to the post office, sort of a very starting to be the highly trafficked space, it would be awesome to have more retail and to replace those flats on the ground floor because they're, they're in the shape of, you know, twenty-five by forty, like a really long linear space that would be really great use for us, maybe some more likes, um, like smaller investment startup, you know, kind of emerging entrepreneurs. You know, I, I feel like this, this idea that that whole riverside could be, uh, somewhere meaningful to eat, drink, shop, you know, gather with, with a flagship, you know, at that, at that fountain, the retail fountain would be wonderful. It's kind of spaces like Bo Market and Somerville, or even, you know, um, I think there's one also, uh, in Austin called Speedway. It has like the notch brewery at the, as a flagship with little, you know, pop-ups along the sides. And I, I don't, you know, I'm sure that, that whole space is sort of, the retail space is really, really changing, but with, with COVID and people working from home more, I think services like, you know, small ramen shops, I keep mentioning ramen shops. Or like, you know, bike repair, uh, along that trail would be like just, uh, a lively space and kind of changing our town as this entire building changes. And I would be up for, you know, um, giving up some, um, units for that purpose. So to, to revitalize the town in a different way. Ninety seconds?
Nah, two, two minutes and thirty seconds. Well, Kurt, you're next on my window here.
Sure, I, I can go and I, I can be pretty quick. I, I, I generally agree, I think with, certainly with Sally's comments, and I think to some extent, Echangs, I think that, you know, part of the goal is to, you know, continue to, and I think some of the, the section seven point three point seventeen talks about, you know, connecting it to the existing spaces and sort of, I think it speaks to having like similar uses to what's been already happening on that streetscape, and I think that in particular on the pond side, you have China Sky, which is an activated retail area. You kind of want to continue that along the pond and activate that pond, open green space for the benefit of the town, which I think that was already addressed by the previous board as a priority, um, and developers already incorporated that, I think it's great. I also think the Mount Vernon side should also, that's a very, it's a, a, a road that would be nice if it was, you know, activated more and brought down the street towards Town Hall as well, and even wrapped around the corner on the, on the riverside. I think what Echang's describing for the riverside would be awesome. I, I question like the viability of retail on a section like that, that's just kind of a walking or biking path, I think it's just gonna be harder space, um, to make successful in a town like Winchester. So I mean, I think for me, my priority from like a, you know, viability of, of, you know, being able to actually find vibrant, active tenants that stay in place, I think I would focus the retail on Mount Vernon and on the, the pond side there by China Sky.
Okay, thank you. A, a minute and fifteen. Cheryl.
Yeah, I, um, I believe that the design of the ground level, um, for public use, and I say public in a very generous sort of way, but I mean, the village participating with the building, I think that I said in our last meeting that I feel like the design approach thus far has been to create unique environments along each of the, the sides of the building so that we don't end up with a giant, you know, condo building on the first level. I think that the designers have done a lot successfully in delineating each one of those sides to create character based on the site itself. So whether it's the river and a bike path, or it's the river relating to Main Street, or it's Converse Place having pavers and a, a unique sort of corridor, sort of vista opportunity, or you're across from the firehouse and, you know, you're part of Mount Vernon. I think each of those, um, each side of the building um, on the first level has an opportunity to, to contribute something to the village and at the same time be, um, a housing, uh, an opportunity for housing in, in downtown above. So I would just say, you know, I'd just like to see the design team be really creative about how to, how to continue on what they're already doing, but make these opportunities for public space for whether, you know, in a, in a commercial sense. Activate, activate our streets, um, at the same time as providing the housing above.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a quick follow-up question?
Can, can, can I get my minute and a half first? Um, I'm gonna set the timer myself. So, um, I have to thank Eeching for making me think of the sides differently than I had before. And so, I, when I, I, at some level, I think commercial makes sense on Mount Vernon. Walking along the river made me realize, and as what Cheryl said, these are four very different contexts and fields. Walking along the Vernon, on, on, along the river on the side opposite, say, Town Hall, I think of that as a more natural setting. Because you have the river right there and you look across and you see the other side. As you move towards the pond, that does seem to be a great area for gatherings. And my concern about a commercial space there are, one, making it, there, there needs to be a corridor from Main Street into that area so people know it exists. And currently, as you, as you stand on Main Street and you look down Congress Place towards it, you know, by the, by the, the frozen yogurt shop, it's not an appealing entryway, so I'm concerned about its viability because of that passageway. I, I'm also concerned about making sure that if there isn't a commercial space there, that that space doesn't become sort of, uh, a proprietary space to the residents of the building, that they realize that it's, it really is a shared space. I have heard tales of what happens in some other parts, like along the, the Boston waterfront, where there is a public way because it's required, but that residents of, um, buildings built just along there still see that as their proprietary space. So I'm concerned about that. If there was to be a, oh, dear, I'm up at two minutes. I think that having small shops along Congress, along this Wunorf idea, along Congress would, you know, if you could imagine that the buildings that are currently, you know, the back end of the buildings actually sprouted newer shops, you could have this alleyway there, which could be very interesting because it would be a, uh, but that requires, um, the other owners to go along with that. So I, I'm kind of all over the map on this, so, uh, as you could tell. But I, my strongest point, I think, is, is definitely Mount Vernon. And then I will stop because I'm at two thirty-seven. Sally, you had a point to make, and then let's open it up, um, for, um, the applicants.
So the one point is, I just remember reading somewhere in the zoning bylaws that acknowledging that sometimes in the early years of the development, it's difficult to fill ground floor retail, that they would be designed and fitted in such a way that they could start out as one thing and become another. Like it could become a restaurant, it could become whatever, um, and, and it was, it was in the part of the zoning bylaw that talks about the transparency of the building. And that if it's hard to fill ground floor, commercial, retail, restaurant, whatever, in the early years, that you can have it be briefly residential or whatever. I just, I'm throwing that out there to Eeching's point about the difficulty of predicting the future.
Just to point out, sorry, I, just to carry your point a little further, I think you're really talking about office.
Oh, that it would be ground floor office?
I'm just saying, I think to further your point, I think, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what should happen, I'm saying, I'm saying a restaurant, you know, housing, you don't want housing to be temporary, that, 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 you, you know, a restaurant, that wouldn't be temporary. I guess a bike shop, I mean, a bike shop would potentially could work, but we're not necessarily here to decide the commercial. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that if you're talking about land use, what you're talking about, what, what you're talking about is some type of swing space or whatever, it's, I mean, sounds, it, it sounds like, it sounds like an office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
So why don't we, uh, open up the floor to our applicants? And maybe you can give us your reaction to what you just heard? And then, um, we can jump into a discussion. And, uh, I will let you, uh, whoever wants to take the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm Ian Gillespie, and my partners, Jan and Paul are with me. And from Haseen Associates, we have David Spinkin and Rob Clocker. Uh, so you, you guys, and thank you very much also for the, the last meeting, which was terrific, a, a great dialogue, which I think the, the conclusion was the diversity of housing allows us to continue to uh, discuss with you the, the, uh, the building that we have now in the PUD three, so that's very helpful. We had just started on this discussion, which is a, a great discussion. I think you saw from the history that we originally had the retail on Mount Vernon, and then there was a flip to the pond. As we, and we happen to agree that the retail, especially now that we see these alternatives, uh, the primary retail should be on Mount Vernon. Uh, so we actually completely agree, and David will show you some, uh, plans in a minute that, uh, help just as reference points for the discussion. When we do that, that flips the, uh, residential entrance back to the pond side. So that starts to affect what happens, uh, in terms of, uh, retail or commercial space on the pond. The, and certainly on the, uh, Town Hall side, we thought the building, actually the residential there, and I defer, I mean, if, I, I understand Ms. Scott's point about that, but it's, I also, uh, Mr. Spring is right as well. The, the viability of that as a retail space is questionable in our minds. I would, you know, we can make it commercial space of some kind, it could be office space, for example. But let me turn it over to David, and he has some reference slides, and any comments on that? I think we, we agree with you that the retail should go Mount Vernon. David, thank you.
Yep, so Rob is gonna bring up slides. Uh, we just have a few slides for reference, as Ian mentioned. First of all, uh, I think the key thing a- as, as we've been discussing is, I think Cheryl's point was very well taken, that, that we are looking, uh, at the unique character of each side of the building. Right now, uh, what we've been talking about is basically four pieces of program. There's a bunch of service, unfortunately, the, the unhappy stuff. There's retail or commercial space, uh, there's residential lobby, uh, and there are potentially residential units. So we want to talk about options for locations of those things. The reason it's important, as we mentioned at the last meeting, to tackle this now is because it impacts the site plan, it impacts traffic, it impacts the location of cores in the building, and in turn impacts how we develop the massing and the articulation of the building. So first scheme, uh, that we're showing, as you know, is what's been submitted in the PUD with retail facing the pond, basically in response to what we had heard from the board, um, which pushed the retail, sorry, the residential entrance onto Mount Vernon Street. And we, uh, had previously been asked to looking, look at maximizing residential units on the ground floor. One comment about here, about the amount of service that there is, uh, and where we've located it. We need access to parking. We are including a bike room, we're including a trash room for both retail and residential, which needs to be loaded and unloaded. And then there's a large transformer of any building this size that actually needs access to a public way in order to move equipment periodically, uh, over the years in and out of there. And that's roughly what we're showing in, in this scheme as, as white space. I know, uh, there's been mentioned a desire to maximize active uses on, on, on Converse Place. I guess the question that we can get into is whether, uh, we, we then want to displace any of this to another facade, which seems to us like not the right choice. I think it's, yes, this is a, a narrow, um, uh, serves for service for the building. We think we can approve it and make it better, but it does seem to be the place to concentrate these uses that do need to be on a perimeter rather than putting them on Mount Vernon, the pond or the river. Uh, so this is where, what you've seen. Uh, just, uh, on the next slide, as a reminder, the prior scheme that we had gotten some feedback on from the board, uh, back in twenty twenty had, uh, retail, um, and commercial space at Mount Vernon Street wrapping, uh, along the riverside. We had shown the residential lobby, uh, facing the pond, still leaving a, a, a large public space. Um, and then this, this, there was some confusion about what we were leaving residential and amenities. Our intention at the time was not that this was all residential amenities. It was that it was some combination of residential units and some small amenity space. So even here, although we weren't delineating units, we were entertaining that idea. So we can go to the next slide. What we're showing here is, uh, just a quick concept sketch that incorporates some of the feedback we're starting here at, at the last meeting. So as Ian said, we're looking at going back to, uh, what we had laid out in an earlier scheme with really focusing the commercial space on Mount Vernon. We think this works, we agree, we think it works, it's the, it's the best place to support, support active retail. It most closely aligns with what's described in the zoning, we think. But it does then flip the residential lobby, uh, to the, to the south side of the building. Now, I think Ian can feel free to jump in and speak to this. I, I think the feeling is that this is, uh, a better place for the residential lobby. It's not taking away from the retail corridor along Mount Vernon. It's better for drop-off, it would require the reversal of the direction of Converse Place, which we have to deal with the select board about. But, uh, you know, we hear the comments about, uh, wanting to make sure that this, uh, outdoor space facing the pond does not feel privatized, and I think we're, we're confident that we can work with Poply Wolf, uh, to do that. What were they?
I might just mention that, that we, there are many ways that we can accomplish that, um, in terms of easements or whatever, if, if there are any fears there. But I think Brian would attest to the fact that we have always considered the, 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 our, our outdoor space to be public space. So we intend it to be that way, and, and we, we don't intend to wall it off, uh, in the future. There, there was, if we do have residential units on the pond as shown here, we do think that they deserve a stoop of sorts, but it's not taking up a great deal of the, uh, public space. It's just giving them a place to sit outside. So we, we, we do want to preserve public space as. So we, we, we do want to preserve public space as real public space.
But we are showing this, uh, a narrower zone in this game than in what we submitted with the application. I'm maintaining some residential units here. We think we could squeeze in, uh, three units of various sizes. And we'll, we'll can work with you on that in terms of the unit mix and how, how, um, we would incorporate units, uh, here. But hearing feedback, you know, I, I think Ian and, uh, Jan and Paul really need to comment on the viability of, of, uh, flexing this either to have some temporary program, which eventually becomes retail, or whether it works as, uh, some other public facing use, but we hear, we.
And we're all, and we're open to suggestion to talking to, you know, retail experts about that. Sometimes we see, uh, from our perspective, towns ask us to put retail spaces in, uh, multifamily development projects that, that remain vacant. And there are a couple of issues here. We also don't want to compete. For example, on the cafe, there are three cafes, uh, right, right in that block. We're right next to three cafes, uh, plus, you know, two or three other restaurants. So there's no lack of, uh, restaurant support there. And hopefully they can bring their coffee or whatever over to the oval. We're, we're, we're open to suggestion, but, uh, the viability here of retail in the back of the building on, on the townhouse side is, is questionable. We could do office. Noise office.
Uh, one comment about the idea of, of trying to get some retail space on both ends. There are some logistical issues with, uh, how the interior of the building works if we are putting residential units on, uh, the ground floor here. Because we need to service if, for instance, where we have amenity, labeled, if that were some kind of small shop, coffee shop or key, you know, food kiosk or something. That would need to be serviced somehow through the building to get to trash, to get to loading, because there's no loading right, uh, in front. So there would be some question about the crossover that has to happen of accessing residential units to get to that commercial space. However, if, if we, uh, change the program where we've indicated residential and this all became future retail and, and temporary office, uh, there may be some ability to resolve that.
No, Ms. Scott, do you have, do you have any thoughts seeing what we're presenting here? I understand your concerns.
Yeah. I understand, um, how, I think it's maybe my personality, but I tend to go by the river a lot. Like that's my primary route so that it feels like the most public to me and I, um, love to stop and get a bop a tea somewhere, but, um, you know, I, I get that most people don't do that. Um, so.
Mocha tea is right around the corner. It is right around the corner. Bring it along and we'll have benches there for you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that.
Some benches on the river.
Um, I, I agree with what Dia was saying too. It's just the privatization. There was some sort of wall looking things in a couple of renderings and it was, it just felt a little bit, um, you know, standoffish, um, and, and for somebody like me who like frequents that, you know, bike trail run and bike, um, it, it feels like a little bit, like I, I, I feel a little bit ill at ease being in that space. But if, I know, I'm, I'm certain your, your landscape architect can figure that out and make it less, less, um, feel less imposing.
We will want you to feel very comfortable there. That, I mean, that is, uh, from the beginning, uh, we've all, the development team and the Haseen team have all stood right at that corner. And so this is why we're in the business. It is magnificent. So, and we are, you know, I use the word too much, but we are stewards. And this is public space. So we do want you to feel comfortable. Uh, we want the public to feel comfortable coming through here. And we hope that the oval will make that happen also. The oval is a very special place.
Ian, Ian, if I could jump in there too, we, we did receive the same feedback from the design review committee about those small gardens we had shown on the east side. Uh, we were absolutely going to reconsider those. And as Ian says, reduce them more to just a stoop for any units that are over there so that the space does, doesn't feel like it has a private zone to it. So, so we heard that loud and clear.
So I just want to step in, uh, very briefly here to note that we have about 10 minutes left in this discussion. And so if the, if board members have something they want to respond to, a couple, you know, jump right in. I have something really quickly I'd like to say, I've been holding on for a bit. And that is, it seems that you're always, um, putting the residential lobby and the commercial space at opposite ends. And I'm wondering, would it be possible to, for instance, in this drawing, move the residential lobby entrance back to where it was in the front and still have the commercial space there? In my mind, that means that you will always have motion on Mount Vernon, because you've got people coming and going from the, from the lobby. And that adds to the enlivening of the streetscape. And it could allow you to have a small commercial in the back, which is more readily serviceable.
That's a fair question. I'll defer to the architects.
I, I, I think there's a way to make that work. And again, it depends a bit on if that run of infill between facing the river is held as residential or is office that becomes, uh, uh, retail in the future. That would make it easier because there could be a back of house corridor, a service corridor that sort of links the back of all those spaces to get to a single trash room, a single loading um, area off of Converse Place. Um, but we can, we can certainly look at that and see what the implications are.
It's got, um, Mr. Chairman has got competing interests. That's what happens. You really do have strong, strongly competing interests in a way of the flow of the traffic. The, um, the residents, to be blunt, don't want to be coming in with the shoppers. You know, it's like Faneuil Hall, the shoppers on the ground floor and the office on the second floor, third floor is very awkward for the people climbing up to the office space. Uh, there's just a, a mixed air of spaces. That's why we, on a knee jerk basis, we separate them and give them each their own function and each their own access.
Okay, but that seems, I can understand that.
But going back to that location, you wouldn't have to turn around the direction of Converse Place. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, we don't have.
A couple, can I ask a couple of questions about the parking and the services aspects?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Um, so I'm assuming that, um, the two locations are the, for the garage is the cars pulling in and the automation taken, taking place to take cars below, correct? Those are the two car elevators there?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so that's obviously not negotiable, negotiable in terms of being on that level, um, along Converse Place. But, um, transformers are in cities like Cambridge, who are very aware of sea level rise and other issues with having water and transformers get involved with each other, are putting them on the second floor of buildings. Um, and I would want to understand if we're going to all the trouble to automate parking, is there a possibility of putting, um, a bike room um, in the basement with some, uh, elevator access? And is it possible to do the transformer above, leaving just the access to the car park and the, um, garage on the, on the ground level?
So I can take a stab at that and Rob, maybe you, uh, add anything if you want to, um, fill in. So I think the issue with the transformer above is interesting. The two things I would say that would make it difficult, one is that you need a certain clearance, height clearance, that I don't, that we have on a retail level that we will not have on a level that's set to the height of, of residential units. The other thing is that we're then displacing res- residential units, probably a one bedroom apartment for the size of what this, uh, I mean, we'll, we'll have to verify with utilities what, what is required, but we're seeing more and more that it's actually two transformers for a building of this size that's required. So it's quite a big space. So those would be the two concerns, I think. Bike room, we've talked about whether a bike room could be in the basement. I think, um, the issue with, uh, the automated parking lifts is they're not accessed by people essentially. And it then requires, you know, a path would, i- if it were just a conventional garage with a, with a drive down, then you would need um, passenger elevated going down there and two means of egress. And then you could find room for a bike room if there, if there's space for it. With the, with the lift, having all those cores go down just for a bike room would then impede, I think, two means of egress, passenger elevator, plus the lifts impedes the, the footprint needed to get all the parking to work. Rob, is that?
Yeah, and I think, I think that, you know, the bike room is probably the least of, of the concerns along there. Would there were, there could be other places we could locate it, we could associate it with the lobby and make it nice and make it feel more active, uh, but we do have a large trash room. And the, the, the transform is, is as frustrating for us. Uh, uh, many of our projects have this challenge and it used to be that they could go under a sidewalk or in a basement, which seems natural, but with sea level rise, they've all come up to the ground level. And it's very challenging to get them up the building with ever source, frankly, for all their rules. And as David said, the height is tall. It is a 900 square foot space. It's a one bedroom unit. Um, we would love to put it somewhere else, but it's, there's not many practical or permissible places to locate it.
I guess what I heard last week was that there was, um, the possibility that, um, you could negotiate with us on, on the number of residential units on the, in the building. Um, and then I, I think what I'm hearing, or what I would like to see, and I think um, others on the board have expressed it as well, is that, um, that we, you know, we have, we encourage public space, um, and of, you know, of the sense of there being place on Converse Place. And right now, Converse Place is other than being bookended by commercial space and the residential lobby is, is really just mimicking what's across the street, which is a dumpster and parking. And I don't think that it's, it's going to, this particular layout is not going to encourage Converse Place to be some, something different. It's only going to be different materials at this point, because the program is really just maintaining what's there currently today. So I think it would be really, you know, I, it, I agree, commercial space on Mount Vernon Street is, you know, it's a natural location. It's a continuation of what the commercial space we have already. But I think it would be, I, I just don't think that this is, um, this is thinking outside the box at all about how to create, you know, a, a public village environment around a, a very large housing uh, development in the center of our town. And I think, I think we can do better than this.
So if I, if I could just comment about some of what's along here. And the, the detail isn't drawn yet, obviously, but the way this parking works, there will actually be, if, if we go with the lift system, there will be pedestrians. So you park your car, you walk into a door that goes probably down a glass corridor to the lobby. There's probably in that same corridor, a bike room with a glass door. So it's different than, um, uh, say a garage entrance where there's a ramp and no one ever walks along that, um.
Right. And that's, I, I think, Mr. Tim Bankin, that, that's why the, the other entry on Mount Vernon Street, which was much more successful because it was adjacent to the cars entering, not this one, but the one, the original one, the one we looked at last. Right. So there's, there's the sense of the car pulling up, dropping someone off at the lobby and then pulling in and then walking back. So I, that I do, your argument, I completely, I feel this scheme illustrates that, but I think the new scheme does not.
Well, I think we can, as I said, the detail isn't worked out. So we can, the, the intent was really that we're flipping this and we would have the similar relationship of lift to side entrance to bike room, to dog wash room, which aren't labeled here, to lobby. Right? So I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think we can work to get that to, you know.
And I know it's a sketch, just what you've done is just to the two, but I don't, you know, I think we just need to be, work a little harder at it than, and that's your next steps. I understand.
I, I guess the other thing just to consider is if you think about what happens in the future P U D on the China Star and C V S site, it is likely that this is where there will be a garage entrance and loading for that whole, uh, group too. So what, understand, I, I think we, we have to look at that the important thing about Converse Place, I think, is, is maybe Kurt mentioned, the, the Vista, looking for Mount Vernon down that with better materials, with better facades up above. It's not just a, a, a one floor with service. So I, I agree, as David said last time, it's a challenge we need to obviously work on. But it would be good to get feedback, I think, from everyone. Is, is there agreement that this is really where service, these service things need to be as opposed to trying to disperse it and have bike rooms certainly could move to the riverside. I think that would make sense so that it faces the bike path. The other things challenging to, to, um, give up facade and another, another side of the building, I think, but.
I think this shows pretty clearly the dilemma we're in is Wolf with the, I mean, if we go to, I, let me, if we could flip to the, uh, commercial on Mount Vernon for a brief moment and ask Ms. Wolf. Um, yeah, yeah. Are you in? It, it's hard for us to squeeze a really elegant residential lobby into that space with the commercial. And so if those two for a building of this size, one of the things I want to point out is obviously we're, we're bringing a hundred people to Converse Place also. So hopefully just by the sheer fact of being here, we, we increased, uh, the livability of Converse Place, particularly when we repaved it and so forth. But if these, if these are competing interests, we've been hearing from the board that at least that this commercial space should be on Mount Vernon. If that anchors that end uh, and becomes exclusive to the commercial and sends lobby to the other side, then we don't have a lot of play. Is, is that commercial space acceptable to you? And if so, is it okay if we put the residential lobby on this end?
In my opinion, I don't think, I think the residential lobby at the, at that location is, um, I, I don't, I don't feel, I, I mean, I, obviously I know how to lay out a building, so I be the reason for it going there in terms of Converse Place and parking, cars, all of that. I, I just don't think it's as successful at this end on the pond end.
And yet we've been hearing that the zoning and the, you know, the, the guidance from the planning is to make Mount Vernon commercial, not entrance. And we need, it needs substantive entrance.
But I, I think, I think Ms. Scott said it, or maybe it was Diab actually, that said, um, that I, I disagree with you, Mr. Gillespie, that you can't have, um, a residential lobby and commercial on the same side of the building.
Oh, no, I agree you can, but we, well, this is a limited space. It's not, it's not as big as a normal commercial building would be or a normal commercial space might be. We can and have, we did put it on there. And if we show that again, we can make the other space there. The, the lobby should be on the corner. If the lobby is going to be here, it should be on the corner of Mount Vernon. And I think you'd agree with that.
Yeah, I thought, I, I thought it was, it was very successful there.
So if we go back, that only, can we flip back to the earlier when the lobby is there, please?
And then you had amenity space or fitness.
So we had fitness. So we can, we can make a commercial space there.
And maybe drop the two.
I'm sorry, and and drop.
And then and drop the first two bedroom because you're basically doing a much bigger retail space in your new scheme than you are in this one.
Well, we can certainly do it. It does not bring the what the zoning wanted, which was I I think I defer to Brian, but the 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 commercial fully along Mount Vernon and enlivened it, half of it will be lobby, which is fine. I mean, if that is the will of the board, this is we happen to think this lobby at the pond end as a discreet drop off lobby works extremely well. And then you progress up to the corner and you can drop off there for somebody shopping, whatever.
I think the word that you just selected is a real is a real tell that it it is a discreet entry to lobby for the residential. And I think that that's one of maybe that is is, in my opinion. And I, this is, I've talked way too much. I'd like to hear more from the rest of the board, but I feel like that's that in itself. You know, we don't know what's going to happen across the street from there on Converse Place. Obviously, we have a lot ahead of us in terms of the P U D, but I think that I think right now this is a more successful approach. I just feel that we're really shortchanging the zoning by not providing more. We we keep calling it commercial, but I mean, really, public amenities to the town on such an important site in terms of it being in the center of our town.
So I'm I'm gonna break in real quick now because we actually have, thank you, Cheryl, we actually have run out of time. And we we are meeting next week in one week to continue this hearing. I think that if I could sum up from what I've heard the board say is that the board seems to have a consensus that they would, they would definitely prefer some commercial on Mount Vernon. I think that's a fair thing to say. The location of the lobby entry, I think, is something that maybe can be worked out or needs further discussion. That there are concerns about the streetscape along Converse Place because of all the amenities. I just want to point out that if you need to have traffic reversal on Converse Place, that is outside this board's purview. And that you also might need to discuss what the other businesses on Converse Place are doing in terms of their loading and unloading and whether that creates issues for them. So those are just things off the top of my head that we can't do anything about, but if your design requires the street be reversed and the you can't get it, then that's a problem. So what I would love to do is, at this point, we need to set a a time certain for our next hearing. And I really wish we didn't have to cut off this discussion because I think it's been really good. But Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, so I I think we had, we had, it makes the most sense to start at eight o'clock, so we can get some other business done first at seven thirty.
So the idea would be that we would meet a week from today, which is
The seventh.
December the seventh at eight o'clock. Can other people, members of the board, can you chime in as to whether that is time is doable for you? Kurt says yes. Sally says yes, and Cheryl is still pondering. I mean, Cheryl's still pondering, sorry. Cheryl, can you make it?
Yeah, I can do the seventh. I guess I guess the question that I have, Mr. Chairman, is whether or not the design team, along with, I I noticed that our our oh my gosh, I can't see his name, so I.
Philip Chen, design consultant.
Our consultant is online and I I just want to make sure that we we give the design team some time to to, you know, digest a lot of the things that have been said this week and last week before we just keep running at. You know, this is an incredible design team. They're gonna, I, there's just so much potential and I just don't want to be shortchanging them in terms of taking, taking in what we've, what's been discussed.
I fully agree and but we 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 do actually do have stormwater management that we can go over next week, so. So we were supposed to be doing that today, but Brian, do you want to talk a little bit more about how Philip works into this process? Can you give us two minutes on that? And then we have to, we do have another party in waiting.
Sure, yeah, we are a little bit behind. Yeah, so we, you know, the scope and fee appears to have been agreed upon. That just happened this week, so the idea is that we're going to get a contract moving as quickly as possible. And we'll be able to have a first meeting certainly before the new year guaranteed. And that's kind of the plan. But yeah, while there is also traffic and stormwater that we're going to have to be going through as well, so that will allow work to occur outside of the meetings. So that helps a little bit there. If any further questions about admin?
So do, so next week's meeting is storm management and and traffic potentially and and.
So I would, I would actually say that it's it's definitely stormwater. We will have, I don't, I can't tell you for sure if V H B will be there. The hope is that they will, but there is a memo that's out there. Initial memo was out, so we'll be able to review it. Though I will be able to ask questions, you know, of the applicant related to that, if there are any. But it's also, the information is really kind of going, going through CONCOM as well. So it's even though we're using the same consultant, that's really more of a CONCOM process. Traffic is a little bit further behind and probably we won't get it till the two meetings after that. So there will be time next week for us to discuss design, but it is not, certainly don't want to have people's time if we're not, if there's not enough time between now and then. I will say that probably not meeting between now and next week. The Philip, if that's what you're asking directly.
I wasn't asking that directly, but I I was trying to understand what would be a good rhythm here for design input and then and then feedback.
Right. I think so typically we'd have a a meeting, then a a meeting, a planning board meeting. And then after the planning board meeting, there would be a recap of that meeting of let's, you know, let's, what what needs to occur here? This is what I heard. This is what you heard. These are my notes. Then the the design team would go and work typically, it depends on their schedule. It's one to two weeks later and then, you know, we would meet, you know, after another meeting. So, you know, it's every few weeks for a few months, like every two to three weeks for two months, something like that.
Yeah, originally, there was a two week time period before we were talking about design, but we we swapped stormwater for commercial space for this evening's entertainment. So we had thought of, you know, every other, you know, so there is some sort of a breathing space for everyone to step back. So maybe next week is too early, but we do have a meeting scheduled for next week, so we we can, you know, move, you know, we'll see if if there's, if there's time to discuss it. I I don't, if if the design team hasn't had a chance to come up with something, then we just won't. There's no point in talking about it, but we do have a meeting next week. So I think then that okay, so we we will continue this hearing until eight P M on December the seventh. And I'd like to thank everyone from the ten Converse folks. I actually don't know what to officially call you. Are you Admiral Yora? Are you, I don't know what what you guys call yourselves, but.
Oh, ourselves, Admiral Yora Chair. This is young Timber.
Okay, so Admiral Yora, thank you all for showing up.
By the way, it's Latin for towards better, which is what we're trying to do for this site, you know, and the town towards a better future.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I had no Latin as a as a student, much to my mother's chagrin. So thank you to Philip Chen, our design consultant. We will be in touch. And I thank, welcome to our next set of people on the agenda, and I apologize for the delay in getting you in front of the board. So Brian, do you want to lead us off on this?
Sure. So again, thanks to everyone that was on both in in the public and also on the on all the teams. So we had about thirty minutes for this agenda item. Probably the hope is that we'll take, we'll take all that time. And then Diab, you know, you can, whether you're, well, want to go through the master plan implementation committee conversation that we had allotted fifteen minutes for that, but we had allotted thirty for this. So I think the idea was that we would at least give the thirty.
I think we should give the thirty since it's this, I think this project needs to come to a resolution.
Sure. So I'll I'll talk very briefly and then hand it over to Tom Mahoney, owner of the owner of the property. So this project has become before this potential development has come before the board. This in several different forms related to a six unit subdivision with a dead end road. There was also a potential looking at connecting the the a road so it wouldn't need a waiver for a dead end road. And it turns out that the board would then have to decide on essentially whether it wanted a very steep road or a very or a a steep road or a cul-de-sac. So the board, really, there wasn't a lot of clear, clear direction in terms of where where the applicant really could go, whether it's a six unit subdivision, a three unit subdivision, a totally new overlay district. It was kind of in many different directions. So now, you know, the property Tom Mahoney is here along with Ricky Belvo, who has an option on the property to 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 develop the land. And I think Tom's here to kind of give the story of of really why, why this is all happening, why we're here, his his relationship with with town. And just like to welcome Tom Mahoney to the floor. Why don't you take it away, Tom? Thanks so much for being here.
All right. Thank you. And thanks, thank you to everybody for having us here. I'll try to keep it brief. I'm hoping in about five minutes or so I can cover some some history and context to how we got to be here today. And then and then talk a little bit about the options that we considered and and how we arrived to what we feel is the in the town's best interest and also satisfies the needs of the owners in this. And and so I'll I'll keep it as brief as I can. The history here really, really dates way, way back to the eighteen seventies, when my great grandfather purchased the property. And he he farmed the property for a long time, selling his produce in Quincy Market in Boston successfully. And and as as history goes, he passed on the property to his daughter, who was my grandmother and who consequently passed on the property to three of her six children, my father being one, Paul Mahoney, and his sister Margaret and and brother Charles. And and so in nineteen fifty nine, my dad and mom started the business with help from Margaret and Charles to and that that is Mahoney's today. And that, so that's a sixty three year history. We've been operating at this site. And let's fast forward over the years to two thousand fifteen or to ninety three, actually, is the next chronological important date when the three siblings, my father and brother and sister separated the land. And you know, the the Greek streets, my my Aunt Margaret got as well as what is the the piece of property that is known as the farm stand at the north end of the property, which would that parcel, the the parcel that we're talking about subdividing now is is part, extends all the way to Cambridge Street. Well, and and then in in twenty thirteen, in twenty fifteen, when my aunt passed away, she left her entire estate to Catholic charities and a a convent that my cousin was a nun at. And in doing so, that forced, in order to sustain the business, us to purchase from the convent, the the farm stand, six acre, six point seven acre parcel that extends from Cambridge Street back to where this property is that we're looking to subdivide. But we took on a very large debt in in doing that, as you know, the cost of real estate in in Winchester. So from twenty fifteen, we have been farming and burdening and and bearing the burden of the debt as well as debt from the recession of two thousand eight. So we said, well, geez, you know, how can we? How can we protect the business as the fourth generation now is in their fifties and sixties and nearing retirement age? And the the fifth generation is active in the business now, but they're young in their twenties and early thirties. How do we, how do we build a better? How do we give them a better business to continue in this town and continue to serve the town as we have for sixty three years? And one of the things is, is we need to get rid of as much debt as possible. And with my family decided to subdivide a little over three acres on the top of the hill. And that's how we got to be here today, to to pay down that debt with the money and provide a better business for for the town and for and for my next generation. So with that, we considered several options as to what what we looked at the land and what was the business was not using and said, what could we subdivide? And that's how we got to the footprint that we're looking at here. And we carefully looked at the different options, which I'll go through quickly here and look to Ricky maybe to provide more information on the conclusion. So the the first thing we looked at was the Arc Dog, which is as of right and really we could pursue. But the problem there is that it's a ten acre minimum to pursue it. So in order to pursue it less than ten acres, just ten acres would basically ruin the business as we as we know it. So that didn't, that option came off the table. The only way to do it is a zoning change or a waiver of some sort that would allow three acre Arc Dog, which we don't feel is very viable. Second thing we looked at is forty B. It is a viable thing. It'll probably be, it would most definitely return the greatest amount of money to my family and set the business up for long term success. But there's strong neighborhood opposition to that. My family is in opposition to that. We don't feel that it's appropriate, given the physical location and public transportation and the neighborhood and what it's all about. We don't feel that forty B is the best use for this property, even though it would yield the highest return for the family. We've, and then the the third thing we looked at is cutting out a smaller portion at the top of Rocky Ledge Terrace and doing a three lot subdivision, but that had two major problems. One, it does require a waiver for a cul-de-sac. And it also doesn't meet the requirements to financially support the family the way it's is needed to to make the business healthy. So what we landed on and we feel is our is the the best option for the family is the six lot subdivision, which there's really two ways to do it. One is to connect to Socrates way that Brian touched on a minute ago. And the second is to, which that would require a waiver for the pitch of the road and and the or do the turnaround, which would make the most sense for a couple of reasons and that the the pitch of the road wouldn't be as severe as well as the well, it it covers a few, a few different things, namely, the well, it it covers a few a few different things, namely the there's a tremendous amount of asphalt that is in the bottom three lots of the six lot subdivision that we're looking to remove. And and that would be, I think, from a from a drainage standpoint, be very beneficial to to do it that way. But the but connecting to Socrates way would require a lot more earthworks than the cul-de-sac. I think I should pause there. I've taken a lot of time, so I I think I should pause there and open it up to questions and and Brian, or however you feel this or or DAB, how you feel this should progress.
Thanks. I I think it would be appropriate now if the board wants to. So you're coming before us this evening. Let me just in order to you still want to go forward with the six lot subdivision is is your intention?
Yes.
Okay.
We 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 feel it's in the best interest of both the business and the town.
Okay, just just to make that perfectly clear. So.
And and six law, excuse I'm sorry, six lot cul-de-sac waiver rather than the the connection to Socrates way.
Okay, and so why don't if I'll open it up to the board? We anybody have anything they want to say? Go right ahead, jump in. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney for coming. I visit your office, your your business at least once weekly. I love it. So thank you so much for your contribution to the town. And I have I I understand your your three options. And I was wondering about the arc dot with four three acres and why you said that was not, I think we said viable, but what? What can you speak more about that and why? Why you don't think that would be?
I'll I'll jump in only because I think he relied on me for that one. So right now, the arc dot is is a minimum of ten acres. There had been talks recently as in, you know, the past several years of potentially making it's a little bit smaller, meaning allowing it for these tighter sites that are maybe five acres. The idea of three acres was kind of that that's that's probably a pretty drastic change, all to go right in. I think if the entirety of the board wanted to do that, then I think that that's something that we can talk about and go through town meeting. At the time, when Mr. Mahoney asked, as even now, I think I think three acres with the right site would be would be great. But I I don't I don't know if that really, I I told him under five, I think is pretty, pretty tall ask. Considering what could be done all over town, I guess, for three acres. That came from me is the short answer.
Then Brian, like what what are the points of like friction that you're thinking would prevent that from happening? Like what? I I still don't understand why that is such a tall ask.
Only because, well, I think first I haven't really looked at what types of potential impacts. Like how many three acre parcels are are around? How many? I mean, there's certainly a big difference between a ten acre property and a three acre property. There there are probably not many three acre properties in in Winchester, but I bet we'd find them really quickly if we, you know, did a zoning change like this.
If I if I could just butt in, so this would have to go through town meeting, which would be a three, a two thirds vote. Because this doesn't have anything to do with affordable housing. So.
That not unfortunate, that's not true. The arc dot does require several units. It's not. It's it's a very low amount for something like this. It's like fifteen percent. So there would be an affordable component. So but yes, it would have to yeah, so yes, so it'd have to go through town meeting. But so that's a more of a timing issue and more of a risk.
So if they had affordable components to it, then they would just need half fifty percent vote.
That's correct.
Right. So it's not as tall.
It it's it's not as tall. I think the tall ask is making going to allowing from ten acre to three acre. I I think that just needs to be kind of studied. I just wouldn't want to just go straight into that. For spring town meeting to just do such a, yeah, just to go to do that, I guess. I don't know.
I think the key is what kind of density would we want? What's the green space? Whether or not you would allow separate, I mean, there's there's stuff in the arc dot, which is based upon the size of the about behind the ten acres. Some of we can't, I don't think we can just simply shrink the arc dot, because I think we'd have to make different decisions about you know, the values of the different components and and how how it would work on a smaller side.
I think the reason why ten acres was a minimum was because that it allowed a a a lot of the preservation of of open space.
So in in the arc dot, is the arc dot Winchester specific thing, or is that it hasn't been replicated all over the state?
It's it's an overlay district that's been done twice in Winchester. So it's specific to us. It's the attached residential cluster overlay district. It's in the zoning bylaw. It's on winning farm currently, and it's also across the street actually from from this property at Greystone. So the ideas would be some a different version of that.
Yeah, so it was originally written in order to develop the property across from Mahoney is then known as Panzy Patch. And that's when it came into so the ten acres was based upon that site.
And then we did replicate it on winning farm.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, so it.
So you're saying like you replicated in winning farms and was it just strenuous enough that you don't think that it would be possible to?
It was used on winning farm so that a winning farm had enough that they could simply use the arc dot as is. So there wasn't, they didn't have to do anything special.
Well, no, it's but yeah, they just had to go through the pro, you know, they had to go through the process. So it is first we had to, we had the the planning board got the overlay district. You know, it was a planning board article. We took it to town meeting. We put it on the property. Then the applicant went through the process of going through the planning board and the zoning board to get that permit. So it was like a special permit that they had to go through, but first they had to get the zoning changed. And the idea is that you could go through, get the you could potentially not get the zoning pass, or even if you do get the the zoning pass, it's still another special permit process. So there's just more risk in time involved. That's all.
And and winning farm did have a very long history of attempted and failed development. So having the arc dot placed on winning farm was essentially everybody wanted it. There was this was something that had been festering for several decades. So there was I think a lot of momentum to get it dealt with. So this is, I think, a different beast in that this has just popped up. So. Open platform. Go ahead, Zoe.
So I I I definitely favor the notion of having something that is really beautiful built on top of the rock ledge. And also that meets the needs of the town as much as possible. And I know that we have a shortage of what's called the missing middle of housing. And my question is, if we do an arc dot in a smaller acreage, can it be tied to creating not a few number of very expensive, single family homes, but a larger number of more middle market, that missing middle that we keep talking about, homes on that land? And can can has that been and can it be explored?
I I think the idea that this evening would be to if the entirety of the board was in complete agreement of, yeah, we're all behind a zoning change and we're all ready to go, raring to go, let's do this. Then I won't, I guess I won't speak for Ricky and Tom, but I would imagine that that would you that would make you happy. It's more of they're preferring to do a six unit subdivision. That is what they would prefer to do. However, if the entirety of the board is ready to do some type of a zoning change, that's not their first choice, but that seems to be acceptable. I think the real the real message here is that something, one of these three options has to happen for them. Sounds like so. And one of them happens to be a forty B and and they're, you know, you're not threatening that. I know. I know you're not threatening that. It's it's just a reality of of how this of how this works, of the situation that you're in. So what they're looking for is 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 some type of answer, whatever it might be that and if it's not their first choice, great. But the idea is that there needs to be something that has to happen here. And if all the whole of all of the board is interested in working towards an overlay, I think that's 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 something that we could that's 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 workable.
So I'm just looking up to see what the density on the arc dot is. And
As it applies to this site, this particular site, it would be about twenty five or twenty nine units.
That's about what winning farm is.
Is winning farm, this what's the footprint of winning farm?
Well, the site is ten acres, but all of the 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 units are are clustered that would I mean, that's the whole the health, that that's why that's why the ten acres is there. So it's a question of how much footprint is being preserved with.
Right, but but if you're going to assume the same proportion of open space to housing, then this site can't take twenty five units.
Yeah, if you're doing the exact proportions, it would probably be more like something like twenty.
It's got to be.
Actually be less. It would be more like
Lot less.
Twelve, twelve.
No, sorry, if you aside from winning farm, if if you I had the engineer look at how many units according to what is the maximum allowed by the Arc dot law, right? And the maximum allowed is either twenty five or twenty nine. I I don't remember. We had to, we had, we looked at a couple of different things and looking at Arc dot. And and with that density that is allowed under today's law, it would be twenty five or twenty nine units. Obviously, winning is less than.
Yeah, I don't, I think that
With the same proportions, it would be about nine units.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, I think that's one of the things we need to look at is we certainly would, what is the what would be the ratio between?
But we're not gonna, I think. To be able to figure that it's more of it's a question of direction here. They're at a crossroads. They've been here three times.
Understood, but if the if the board is thinking about some sort of an arc dot thing, then I think then.
I would just call it a zoning a zoning change. It's not, it's not the arc. It's not going to be the arc dot. It's going to be something. It's going to be something slightly or more different. Let's just say it it it. It's a six hundred subdivision, a zoning change or or something else.
Right, well, if 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 so let's go to the zoning change. And if 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 the zoning change is something along the lines of an arc dot, which is what we're talking about, which be to increase density at some level, then I think it's important that we recognize what other part, if we want to go that route, there are other places around town which we knew would. So for instance, the area off of Forest Ridge, which has been a subject of interest for development for a lot, a lot of that might be a place where this would be applied. So I I think that looking for relief for this one site means that we, as Brian pointed out, we have to look at how that is going to be replicated across town, because it will be used elsewhere. And we will find three for three acre sites will pop up. They just will. I mean, this one popped up out of nowhere. No one knew there was a four acres, four acres out here.
It would, it would have to go through town meeting. It's not like someone could just apply for it. But but the the idea is, I I again, just be in the in the essence of time. It's if you don't want a six unit subdivision there, are you committed towards making a project work here? Or are you just like, you know what? You can put one house there and and you and you got to be done there at least. I mean, there at least has to be not, are you going to approve something? Are you going to not? It's there are three options that are before them that they certainly don't want to apply some apply for something if everyone's like, yeah, that's not happening. I mean, that's just not, you know, so so it's not like, are you going to approve it? But are you definitely not going to approve it? That's really.
Yeah, Brian, we're talking a lot about zoning change. We had, maybe there's been a lot of discussion I'm not aware of about the six lot waiver, or the not the waiver, because because that's as of right. The waivers for the cul-de-sac, so is that a done deal that we're is nobody I've heard from one person or or two, DAB, is that not what this board is interested in?
I'm trying to further, I'm trying to further, I I yeah, I don't, I hope you don't get that 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 impression. I'm trying to further cut the conversation in the essence of time. Because again, this is the third time your, you know, the team has 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 been here. I feel we owe you an answer. And I'm trying to 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 help.
Yeah, because when I when I look a nine lot, if you think of the density of wing, a nine lot condo development is really, is it that different from a six lot subdivision? At the end of the day, it's really is there a difference?
No, that's why I think it's something different. It's not. It's not the arc dot. It's something different.
So I I I'm going to go back to a word that was used, I I think by eating, but friction. And I just honestly taking this to the town for that location in town. Just an area that's surrounded by other single family homes. Just I I just don't think, I think it's going to be a I I don't know that nine condos is is worth that. You know, and I know that's just speculative, but you know, that I I can't say that I think that that's a good use of our time, honestly. I wouldn't be in favor of going for you know, going to the town and asking for an overlay district so that we could get nine condos at the top of the hill. I'd rather see Mr. Mahoney encourage his developer to do a couple, two family homes or not just single family. You know, mansions up there, but find another way to do another house, housing type, you know, with six footprints, but you know, sorry, that takes a different.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't speak on that. We and that's definitely something that we talked to Brian and and DAB and and about would be, could there be the option here to do these as smaller multifamilies? But that that would go through the same zoning change. I think it's a great idea. It's just it it puts us in the same pickle.
The only, the only thing, the only zoning change that's possible, what you're talking about, that would be, that would be to everywhere would be to allow duplexes and triplexes everywhere, for example, which we're not, we're not, we're not there yet, but maybe one day, but we're not there yet.
Your turn.
So I feel like we have, we've had a momentum of a lot of resistance for single family, kind of acknowledging that our single family zoning is really outdated. So some wish for change throughout town. And the state encouraging us by just a fifty percent vote through town meeting to make these zoning changes. And I, you know, I feel like there's a momentum to do that, but should do we do this at the expense of Mr. Mahoney's family? Can we do it in time? I think that it's a great thing, maybe begin to have this sort of tool to apply to to cut through some of this like really egregious zoning like way too old and like not sustainable zoning laws. But how long will that take? Is it, should it be this case that we start, or should we, should we, you know, have this in mind that this is triggering a lot of things that we should, we could be working on and put it to later? But you know, fifty percent is not that big. And I think that the town does have like a momentum of wanting to do something that that changes, you know, nineteen twenties zoning laws.
Yeah, I was gonna I would agree, I think you true what you're saying, but it does feel and I'm I'm think I'm sympathetic with.
But my, I, I would agree, I think you true what you're saying, but it does feel, and I'm, I'm, I think I'm sympathetic to what Cheryl said. I'm not sure this is the right Site for that fight. It seems like, like the North Main Street corridor study comes to mind, like That seems to be like a more logical place to really push for this kind of like increased density in these zoning changes. Um, or maybe it just fits better into the, the existing landscape there, whereas this site. Which is surrounded exclusively by single family homes. It seems kind of like an odd location to try and, to try and push for it.
But we might not be talking about nine units, right? I mean, if we're doing, say, like you can do triple boxes here, we could be talking about fifteen to twenty. Right, so it's not a difference of six and nine. It may be a difference of six and twenty. But then, eh, like how much effort? From this board through the town, do we do this? And you know, I'm just saying that there, there are barriers that have been lowered, like a state law, right? But. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm hoping if we don't do that here, that we would pursue that later.
I, I think that. The ADU conversation will give us a better sense of which way the town feels about this and how far it's willing to go. I, E Ching, I, I guess I don't share your optimism about. The direction the town feels it should go in terms of zoning. I, I'm with you. In terms of where I agree that we should be moving there as fast as possible, but I'm not sure the rest of the town is willing to go there yet. Um. I think what the, and certainly. I don't know that this board would be able to get that done by the spring, considering all of the other things we have on our plate.
Well, ju- just to be very clear, there, there's no way we're gonna be able to try to push a zoning change of putting duplexes or triplexes everywhere in town for this spring. Level. Period.
Right, so.
If we all agree on it, the timing of that is not possible.
I think that. If we're gonna talk about an overlay, which would be different from Removing single family everywhere, that's a separate question, but again. I don't know that this board has the, the bandwidth to do everything we've already signed up to do as well as. Do that. So in my, uh. I think that what this evening's decision is really between two choices, one of which is. A waiver for the cul-de-sac. Which is the quickest way forward to having units on this land. Or the third option, which is the forty B. And. I think I'm gonna reiterate what Brian said is that. Something is going to happen on this land. Somehow. And. Those are the choices that we have in front of us. One of them will happen whether we take action or not. So.
And the, just for my own clarity, the forty B is only um, really viable right along Cambridge Street, right? It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something that could happen up on the hill.
I think my understanding is that this, this lot would be the forty B.
Oh, okay.
No, wait, Tom, Tom has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just, if, I don't know how salient it is, but I, I just want to add that um. Uh. You know. In the event that. The farm in the future is developed, obviously, uh, along Cambridge Street, we have twenty-one acres total here. And what happens along Cambridge Street would very likely be Arc dot or forty B. Um, or some type of a really comprehensive development, right? Um, I hope I never see it in my lifetime, and I hope my kids never see it. But uh, that is probably the best use in that, of that piece of the property where this is in the rear In a single family district, uh, with cul-de-sacs all around, it, this makes the most sense to us. And our neighbors and, uh, and as a neighbor, both my mother lives there, my sister lives there as abutting this property. And our business will be neighbors forever. Uh, we're very careful about that, and so I just want to mention the Cambridge Street piece, although I, I hope we never see that happen in my lifetime. Um, but yeah, you, you're looking at a, a, a three acre forty B on top of the hill, which we really don't want to pursue that. That's not. Uh, but. Leaving it as um, asphalt and trees and what it is not today is not really an option.
So Mister Mahoney, just, just as a thought, then if you combine that three acre site with, with Seven more acres down below. You know, took a, a different cut of the, all the acreage that you have today. Just to preserve. You know, and, and create an arc dot that, that you could develop both high and low. Um, and design well. You could in fact increase. Your real estate. Investment.
Uh, we did look at that actually, and it, it becomes, in doing that, it would limit the um, operations of the farm. And that's not something we're willing to do.
That's an interesting twist. I have to say.
So um. We, I think we've, we've gone over our half hour, um. And I, I, I guess what Mr. Mahoney are looking for is some sense from the board. Um, whether. To be blunt, whether the board would consider a waiver for the cul-de-sac, which would allow him to go forward with the six units. Or whether the board would. Just. Go the other way, which is not to, not to grant a waiver. I think that's, that's the direction they need.
So one thing just to mention, I guess, is that the, the, the way waivers are given In general, and that is written in our subdivision rules reg as if it's in the public interest. That a public interest is extremely broad in both all the, this sense as well as the legal sense. Um. In, in, in the question here, and, and I don't really know how to. A hundred percent get there, but it's a question of whether, you know, an economic development benefits of keeping a business. Thriving is really can enter our conversation or not, and that's something I'd, I'd, I'd want to get more clarity on. But that's just to throw that out there, that waivers specifically are in the public interest. So it's a question, and, and again, that is very broad in the, in the legal sense. And there's no doubt that economic development is part of that. It's a question of whether or not that, that lives in the subdivision rules and regulations.
So.
So do we have to motion to take, to move this conversation into some next?
I mean, this is really a pre, this is a pre-application meeting to determine whether or not They should be applying for a six unit subdivision or applying for something else. And of course, they could apply for a six unit subdivision there. We, we can put conditions on the, on that permit. They could be, actually, the permit could get denied. A whole bunch of things could happen. We're, we're saying. I, I think the point is here is, is that if every person on, uh, on the board were saying there's no way we would ever give a, a waiver for this Subdivision, like that, that's the part of being fair here, is that like, you know, don't, don't, don't make an applicant come in If there is no way that you are going to give, uh, that you wouldn't contemplate it, I guess. Um, and, and, you know, I think that, that's kind of where we're at. So you're not promising to uh. Approve this, um, that, that is not allowed and, and that's not what's happening here, i- I think, um, if that helps.
So I don't know the.
No, it's more, it's more of, Tom and Ricky, do you, do you have any more questions for the board? Uh, to, or, or has there, has there been given, and have you been given enough information? That you can, you feel you can move forward with your, with whatever plans you have, you have, uh, going forward.
Uh, I mean, I, I think we're still looking for more, you know, more guidance. I mean, we We've done our own due diligence with the neighbors and with the site and walking the site many times and looking at the zoning Of a single family zone, and we've come to the conclusion what we think is best. Not just for the Mahoney family, but for my family and for the community around this site, and that this is a, a proper site for single family. Um, if this was a, a better site for multifamily and then I felt it really strongly about it. I would, I'd be standing here saying, well, let's push for multi. I don't think that's what this site is built for, and I think the right use is what we're proposing. And when I met Tom almost, I don't know, seven months ago, when we started talking about this. That was my feeling on it, is that we should do what's right for the community, and the right use here isn't forty B, the use is single family. Um, you know, and, and that, that's how this whole thing came about. So. I think what we're really looking for is that people can, you know, see that there's been a lot of thought going into this, and We understand the concerns of affordable housing and, 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 you know, maybe there's definitely parcels that could be used for To, to help resolve that in town, and I think it's important. I just don't think that this one is the right location for that. And I think that that could be something that can come up, you know, in the future, but on this site, that's not what this site is, is best used as. Um, so looking for really guidance, if you guys can agree to that and that we can. Then what we'll do is we'll come back and, and advance this to that next stage where We bring in the more engineering and we take the plot, the plot, the plans into a formal uh, process.
So, Diab, I just have one thing to add or. Um. So all of this conversation is predicated on the planning board um, granting a waiver Of the su- of the cul-de-sac um, prohibition. Um, and the reason for that, um, going back to probably our first meeting, um, was just the sheer Um, unfeasibility of terrifying the backside of that property. As it goes down to Mahoney's um, uh. A- access off of Socrates, right? Because the property goes to that, but not including that, right? Um, and that the land between that access from Socrates up to that lower housing Area, the, the lower three and then the upper three, that land in between is tumultuous and rocky. Um, and, um, oh, Brian, that's really helpful. Thank you. Um, and, and the consequence of that is that um. It's just prohibitively disruptive to the, the ecology, to the neighbors. To um, to um, the existing. I, I don't want to call it open space because it's private land, but it's, but it's, it's a bit um. It's sort of like um, suburban wilderness land in some regards back there. Um, and some of that land, I wonder, so now, second part of this is that I understand that when a waiver is granted, is granted um, as um, in exchange for some benefit to the town. Um, and Brian mentioned one benefit is sustaining a fourth generation family business. Um. Another benefit would be possibly if some of that land to the left of where the cursor is right now. Um, because I don't really know how that land works out down there. I know it rolls down to the ball field. But if there was some way of adding to the conservation land that is fairly Near that, that other, if you look at the Conservation Commission's map. If some of that land can be put into permanent conservation so that it would provide Um, wildlife habitat and, and green space and, and what we call urban forest, um, I prefer to call it suburban forest. Um, that that would be um, something that would be a benefit to the town in exchange for Um, the waiver because of the disruption and the difficulty of the road engineering. So I just put that on the table as a thinking outside the box comment.
I, I think, I think that to move forward, the, the question is. Um, are member, have the members of the, are the members of the board willing to consider? A waiver, not necessarily Make a decision yea or nay on it, but are they willing to consider a waiver? Um, which would. Allow this, this, this team to go forward with, the next step would be a submission to the board, which is a, is a costly endeavor. So if the, so I think that's really, you know, in our previous discussions, um, there have certainly been Um, s- strong statements against the waiver. I had one of them. So I, I know there's at least one person who strongly was against it. So the question is. Do we see a public interest which is um. Uh, I'll reuse the word strong enough. To overcome um, our. The discouraged use of the waiver. Is there, so I mean, is that, if people are willing to contemplate that. Then I think that would be a signal that, to the development team that they could go forward, knowing that um. They would. Be able to present and have a, 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 um, a fair hearing.
Honestly, Diab, I think that this site is. Is a very difficult site for anybody to put, build anything on. And I think that it's also in a neighborhood that, as we were saying earlier. Going to town meeting and spending the next year working on a zoning change or You know, an arc dot overlay district change. I, I, I just don't. I don't, I, I just don't see this site as being the one that, that's gonna help us. Um, move forward in, in any changes to zoning for, you know, to support our Our desire to Have multifamily ho- housing or, or anything. I, I think this is just a, just a really crazy site.
Oh, I.
I think we're kind of going around in circles. But without real good reason, other than with a really difficult site like this, this is probably about all you can build unless we change zone.
I, I. So the, I mean, what it come, what the, the question is. Not whether we go to town meeting, but whether these people feel like they can bring A six unit development with a cul-de-sac waiver before this board. And get a hearing.
A fair, get a fair trial.
Get a fair trial where, you know, if three of us already say, there's no way in heck we're gonna grant a cul-de-sac waiver. Then there's no point. So we can take Any zoning changes off the table, because that's really, I think we all agree that for this site, that's not gonna be Afficacious. So the question is, have they, can they produce a great enough public good to Allow us to grant a waiver for the cul-de-sac?
And just to be clear, it's not creating a public good, it's just in the public interest.
Thank you.
It's not, and it's not an exchange, and it's not an exchange. This is not impact fees. We're not extracting impact fees here. It's just, does, is the waiver in the public interest? I want to make that very clear. It's not an exchange. It's not a, well, if you do this, we do that. It's.
And that's, that's the point I was trying to make, which is based on this particular site. And its layout. I think it's in the public interest to allow. A cul-de-sac, uh, you know, a waiver. On this, on this piece of land. In my opinion, I, I'm just, and I think I've made the point based on, uh. It's been great to get other options and to hear from Mister Mahoney, and it's been very useful tonight, I think, for me to be able to say that. Brought me to that kind of conclusion anyway.
Yeah, so, thank you, Cheryl. Um, and Brian, thank you for correcting my language. I had meant to say what you said, but it all came out wrong. So, um.
Do you wanna go around the table and just, and just give our positions?
I think that would be useful. I just wanted to state mine because I was a, a, one of the opponents last time. And I think that I am now prepared to consider a cul-de-sac. Um. Where previously I was not. And I think that's where, that's the best way of stating my position.
And I would say that I agree with Diab and Cheryl, that it's a difficult site, if, if there's Um. Any site where a cul-de-sac um, could, you could make a strong argument for it. It would be this kind of a topographically difficult site. Um, um, so I would be um, in favor of granting the waiver. Um, but it would really depend on what you show to us. So I want to see And but that, obviously, you don't want to do that unless you think that Um, there's a chance that it can be successful because it's an investment into engineering and Architecture and civil engineering and so on. So I would say, um, that Um, as long as you feel comfortable that you can bring forward something that would be um. Um, as long as you feel comfortable that you can bring forward something that would be, um. You know, just the most attractive and best and highest use of that land, um, and, uh. Um, minute mitigate impacts on the neighboring properties. I think that I would be in favor of granting a waiver.
Just to be clear again, subdivision, uh, this is building a road, laying out utilities, uh, laying out the lots. This is not. Um, this is not designing of homes. This is not zoning.
Right, so it's just.
It's laying out the lots and laying out the road and the infiltration systems for, the infiltration for the road. Uh, and utilities, um, you know, water, sewer, electrical.
Good point, and I appreciate that clarification.
I'd be pretty scared to buy one of those sites and build on it. Oops, did I say that?
E Ching, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I think that it would be in the pub- public's interest, in public interest to allow a fair. Um, meaning, and I, I, I do agree with, uh, Diab, Cheryl and Sally. Um, I, I, you know, I, I voiced a staunch no too, but I don't think it's, it would be wise to, um. Make it extremely onerous for property owners here to. Um, you know, do something with that land and so. Yes, I'd be willing to. We'll get it.
Okay, uh, Kurt?
Yes, I'd be willing to. To entertain it, yep.
And the benefit of this is that w- once you, um, apply for the waiver. Um, Brian, you can help me with the words, but that's the point where, um. Abutters, I mean, you've already worked with all of the abutters, but it's, it's the part where the abutters are officially engaged in the process, which is a good.
There's two, there's two possibilities. It's either a preliminary subdivision and then eventually going to a definitive subdivision. That would be a two-step process. Or they could apply directly for the definitive. So, um, you know, it's. Um, I'll probably have a, a talk with, with, um, with them, um, in terms of, uh, what makes the most sense.
Can you explain the difference to us now?
Pretty quickly, if something is, is pretty well baked and very simple, they go through a definitive. Uh, if it's not fully baked or not simple, people tend to go through it, uh, preliminary, they get more. It's, it takes, it does take a little more money in the, in the, in the whole end, but you'd rather get it right. The first time rather than kind of take a guess on the definitive and then have to take several steps back. Um, so it's a risk reward kind of thing. It, it, I'll, you know, I'll talk about it with them, but, but generally, um. Um, yeah, the super simple one, you know, the one, the ones that are, uh, one and two unit subdivisions. That is just an extending a little road. Yeah, that's a, just go straight for definitive.
Okay, one probably not is what you're saying.
This one probably not.
Got it.
Okay, um. Thank you very much for, um, sticking around and talking to the playing board, also talking to the, to the, um. Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Beliveau and Mr. Frat, who also I believe is part of that team. Um, for, um, I think you've gotten the guidance you need.
Yes, definitely. It's been really helpful, everybody, and appreciate all your time.
Yeah, if that wasn't enough guidance, then you guys are out of luck, um, so.
Thank you, I.
Um, so thank you very much, um, third time's a charm, I guess. Um, have, I think at this point, uh, we will get back to our agenda. And that part of the agenda, I think we will push off for another evening yet again. Uh, hopefully we'll put it in, uh, can we still change next week's agenda, Brian, and slap it in there? Are we, are we?
Yeah, no, we, we can, we have, um. Yes, we can, and there, there's also a potential, um, special permit we can put in there as well.
We're gonna meet, we may as well make the best use of the time. Okay, so, um, I would, Cheryl, you had your hand up?
I was just gonna ask, besides next week, are we, what? We have one other meeting in December, is that right? So we're meeting three times in December. Well, I guess it's not December today.
It's so close.
It's so close, it's killing me.
No, we are meeting three times though, as of right now. As, as of right now, we're planning on meeting December seventh, fourteenth and twenty-first.
Ay, 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 well, why don't we?
That, that, yeah, that, that is not in stone, that is not in stone. It was the twenty-first was, was going to be the special meeting. We are definitely meeting on the seventh and the fourteenth, so that those are, those are in. Yeah, so yeah, we are definitely meeting on December seventh next week. We are definitely meeting December fourteenth. The twenty-first is still, uh.
I think, yeah, I think we should take a really hard look as to whether we want to meet on the twenty-first. Um, so.
Yeah, it's getting, it's.
It's getting very crowded.
Well, well, we, we figured December twenty-eighth in the, if the idea is that we definitely are meeting on the seventh and the fourteenth. Um, you know, we can talk about that offline, but, but, but please put in your calendar.
Thank you for, yeah, that's all I wanted to know.
If we're really efficient next week, then we can shave a meeting off. I mean, that's the way it goes. Um, but let's try to get master plan implementation committee on next week's. But I would, before we go any further, I would really welcome a motion to adjourn.
I will make a, adjourned, prefaced by thanking Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Beliveau for coming before us this evening.
I, I thank, I thank you all for, uh, your consideration and Brian, uh, appreciate all your, uh, consideration in this.
So that was my motion to adjourn.
Please, someone second it.
Second.
Second.
Kurt wins, uh, roll call vote. Cheryl?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
E Ching?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I say aye as well, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to Nancy Pocari, our recording secretary. Thank you to WinCam. Thank you to all the people out there in TV land. Uh, we will see you in another week. Have a great week. Bye.